We have, let's see, Paul has got a meeting tonight, I presume? Yes, okay. So we are just missing one of our magnificent seven here. We have on the agenda, item number two, public comments for items that are not on the agenda. So Jerry, I see I have a sign-in slip from you. So would you like to come on up and talk to us about that?
Hello, my name is Jerry Herman. About a month ago, I mentioned to the Chair and at least one other person, maybe Counselor Mahoney. Is he here tonight?
Commissioner Mahoney.
There he is, good deal. That, I was really want to see some improvements made to other areas in Washington Street that haven't had an attention in a long time. Many years ago, the organization that I was involved with did a master plan for that whole area, which a lot of it got done. It was a donation that we did to Washington Street. But a lot of things have not been completed over time that I think would be of interest to the Planning Commission, including some concerns I have about certain people, property owners that have a need to tidy up their grounds there. Oregon City Cleanup and Enhancement, which I used to lead, did a lot of work in that area. The Two Rivers Neighborhood Association, which I'm involved with, would like to be involved too. So I'd like to, in the future, bring to you some concepts we'd like to have you consider. The Planning Commission, I don't know what your role would be, I don't know that, but we're trying to advocate for the other end of Washington Street, basically from Home Depot backwards toward the intersection by the end of the Oregon Trail, a holistic plan to come together in that area, based on the work that was done before. That's my request.
And I think you mentioned that this is, not that we want to mention any ages, but about 20 years ago is what you said?
Say again?
You said it was about 20 years ago that this plan was developed?
Well, that's right. About 20 years ago, a lot of those improvements got made. Metro South Wetland was built. We actually did a lot of the work in there and other people in the community. And Metro, as an example, I'm not bemoaning Metro, but seems to have an attitude they don't want anybody on that property or wildlife to fly into it, even though it was designed for those purposes. I'm talking about the Metro South Wetland. There's some other assets there that could look a lot better too if we looked at a holistic design to make the north gateway, it's a really important approach to the city, look more unified, so.
Jerry, is that under the Oregon City jurisdiction? We have a right to direct what?
Absolutely. This commission, previous commissions permitted Metro South transfer station to be built there.
They're using the property, and it's under the purview of the City of Oregon City's land use regulations, that's how they're there.
But you see, Metro owns it?
I said Metro is using the property.
Oh, using?
Now, they may actually own it, but, yeah, we have, we processed, actually, we've had a conditional use permit review here a couple times in the last four years, where they came in and gave us an update on what's going on with the facility. So yes, we do have jurisdiction over them.
There's also some very large wetlands, I call them Nancy Kreshar wetlands, because she's the one that advocated that they be built. They're 12 acres in size, that when you look at the three acres of Metro South, the other 12 acres makes a huge natural resource area there that most people don't even know is there. And it would be interesting to look at connectivity, some trails and things like that over the long term, connecting on into Clackamas Cove as an example, that type of thing, so. Thank you.
There's already a trail there, it just has two metal rails and some cross ties, goes right through it.
Something like that.
There are some passageways for people to walk underneath those railroad tracks, so.
Yeah.
There used to be cattle and other concerns operated on both sides of Washington Street, which was then called 82nd Street at that time.
Yep.
And those cattle movements went all the way into Clackamas Cove, which was a large pasture, it wasn't a cove at that time, had not yet been dug out, so.
Yeah, some members of the audience were probably about 10 years old when that happened, right? He's nodding.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. So that has been duly noted, would you be so kind as to?
I'm still a little bit unclear on if we're talking street improvements, trail improvements, wetland improvements?
I think it's all of the above.
Because we do have the Transportation System Plan, right, that talks about, so we do have a large comprehensive plan through the TSP to talk about street and trail connections as well, and then we implement that through our code, which we'll talk about later.
Our master plan, and then our, we can take a look at the, take a look at the last plan that Metro possibly filed, because I don't think it included any of that area, but I think at the very beginning it did, when they first filed for their CUP to operate the transfer station. They had some stuff over there that they were looking at, but you can't prevent the birds and stuff from flying in there, it's just, it's just wild.
Right, so the city also did large wetlands mitigation with the jug handle as well, and that seems to actually be going really well. I know that there was an update to our Natural Resource Committee, kind of, before now, it's pretty incredible.
I think that some of Metro's property is, the storm drainage is going in there as, you know, to create ponds and whatnot, but, yeah. Let's just bring it back up and see what we want to do with it.
Still unclear what we are bringing back up, though.
He's asking to come back to be, to present at a future meeting where he would be able to show us these maps and plans that were done some time ago. Is that correct? Just nod?
Yes.
Yes, so.
We can take a look.
Yeah, so we'll take a look at it. Okay, duly noted.
I actually believe some of them were included in the record for tonight.
They might have been, yes. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to bring something to our attention that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, all right, well, we're good to go on the next item. So we have item number 3A, which is actually a public meeting, but the record is closed. It's for the Abernathy Place Hotel and Mixed Use Development, planning file CP 17002, development plan 17003, natural resource overlay review 17004. It is a tentative decision and a continuance for us, for our discussion tonight. Before we launch into that discussion, gentlemen, I'd like to ask any of you if you've had any ex parte contacts, or have visited the site again, or have driven by the site, or had anything to do with the site whatsoever.
Since the last meeting.
Since the last meeting, so I'll start with Damon.
Yes, I actually spent quite a bit of time down there today, walking around and looking, and all the way from the Train Depot and up to 17th, and in and out of properties, and so, much more than driving by, which I had done in the past, I was walking and pacing distances and all that, so. But I had no other ex parte contacts, I didn't see anybody.
Okay.
No, no ex parte contact, casual driving down to Home Depot and back, you know?
Okay.
No new contacts to share for me.
Tom?
Same thing, I swam by it on Saturday in the rain, and I still want...
Did you get your ARC?
Yes, I still want the Hackett House from my Addams Family house, but yes, I have driven around it a few times, just to luck, but not walked it.
Nothing to declare.
Okay, and I have been to the site again since the last meeting. I was walking the Hackett House property to take a look at, basically, in my mind, to get a picture of the facade of the hotel that abuts that property, and look at some additional provisions that are in my head about screening. So I will have an additional condition to discuss with you, gentlemen, and I have not had any ex parte contacts. So we are...
Do you want to ask the audience if you want to ask a question?
Does anybody want to, because you can only question us on this item only, only on the ex parte, you can't bring up anything else other than what we saw when we were at the site, or who we might have talked to or didn't talk to. Does anybody want to ask us a question at all about any of the stuff that we have declared for this evening? Okey-dokey. So Pete, take it away, please.
Thank you. So the record is closed for this item, but we can refer back to anything that we have put in the record. I've got a couple of, well, four items that I thought you might want to refer to. We're here to answer any questions you have this evening. What we've done is attached, since the September 25th meeting, all of the evidence that was submitted during the written open record period, so up until Monday, October 2nd at 3:30, anybody could submit argument evidence, and then until Monday, October 9th at 3:30, anybody could rebut argument or evidence. And then the record was closed, and the final period was until Monday, October 16th at 3:30, the applicant only to submit final written argument without new evidence. And the applicant's attorney, Mike Robinson, submitted a three-page memorandum summarizing the primary issues that has, have been discussed through the course of the public hearing The proposal is for a phased master plan for mixed use development. It's a hotel, five stories. The detailed development plan portion of that phased master plan is for the hotel, and subsequent phase would be for mixed use development. The applicant has requested six adjustments that we summarized in the last meeting, I can go into those in more detail. And what we would be doing this evening is deliberating towards a decision, tentatively, and then based on your decision tonight, we will bring back final findings at a continued meeting for November 13th, 2017. Do you have any questions for staff?
Would you like to go over those requested adjustments?
Yeah. So the staff cover report that we prepared on September 25th listed the six adjustments. Adjustment number one was an adjustment to the maximum building height of 45 feet within 500 feet of the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. And that would result in a building height of 66 feet, 1 inch requested as measured from the street front elevation from finish, average finish grade. And part of the discussion there was the height limit and why it was imposed, and there was a lot of evidence placed in the record as to the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, and whether the guidelines that had been put in place as part of this master plan for the end of the Oregon Trail were an official document that was binding as a land use application criterion, and all evidence in the record indicates that it was not. The second adjustment was to the minimum ceiling height of 14 feet for the first floor of a commercial building, and the applicant for the hotel was requesting a 12-foot minimum ceiling height. Third adjustment is to allow a maximum combined fence height on a retaining wall of 15 feet, as opposed to 8 feet in the code. The fourth adjustment is to allow a, ooh, excuse me?
Just lost power there.
Mediating over.
North Korea.
One moment.
That's okay.
The fourth adjustment was to allow the window projection recess requirement for the hotel windows to be reduced for the main, for the main floors. The fifth adjustment was to reduce the depth of the required wall plane projections from 3% to 2.8% for floors 2 through 5 of the hotel. And the sixth and final adjustment request was to allow the main facade, which is the port cochere entry where the cars would be going through, to be side-oriented to Washington Street. And the applicant has discussed in detail in various memoranda and pictures why they feel that adjustment is necessary, and the approach for the elevation on Washington Street with the enhanced entry, which is a pedestrian entry with a stairway. So that's my brief summary of the six adjustment requests. What you're approving is essentially a site plan for the hotel, and that would allow the applicant to proceed with a building permit for the hotel, and then the future phase of mixed use development would be submitted through the detailed development plan process, which is a staff-level approval. It would not, the future mixed use development would not come back before the Planning Commission unless there is some condition of approval that has not been made, based on...
Or they're requesting some adjustments.
Or they're requesting further adjustments beyond the, beyond what was discussed here. Thank you.
So, gentlemen, my understanding is that the proposal at this time does not include the mixed use development, which is further down the road at some point in time. So I'm trying to, Pete, if you can help me through this.
Yes.
Should they submit, other than, as you just stated, that they would not be coming back for any review by us, unless there were some exceptions?
Yes, so the way amendments to master plans are handled in the code, there are three thresholds. The types of amendments that have to be reviewed by the Planning Commission are very specific and spelled out in the code. They include anything that was not anticipated within 100 feet of the plan area boundary, for example. And I can go into more detail on those. The most, most of those, if you have conditions of approval that you want to add this evening, or amend this evening, we will take those into account. Anything that has to do with screening, for example, as you mentioned, you would probably want to amend or add as a condition of approval. And if we need to discuss the adjustment amendment thresholds in the master plan code, we could probably go through those in a little more detail. I don't have ready access to them right now, yeah.
Do you want to mention the...
The conditions?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so Commissioner Mayby had made the point that we had, we need to summarize the revised recommended conditions of approval. So we had entered some items into the record at the last meeting that dealt with condition of approval 17, John Replinger had spoken about that.
That's not on your slide?
Right, that's not on my slide.
Okay, so we need to go to the packet then, okay.
Yeah. And also condition, the condition with respect to connecting the train station through to 17th Street. There was a desire, and the applicant had agreed to mention 17th Street specifically in the condition of approval number 14, number 45. So what we would be doing is bringing back with the revised findings, the revised conditions of approval that you've already discussed.
And then, was there an additional condition of approval at some point that...
I...
I know we were talking about, well, we need to add this, or do, and, boy, I went back through everything, and I realized I probably should have just listened to the minutes, it would have probably been faster, but...
I don't believe so.
Okay, I know, because it was like, well, we're going to modify, and then we're, no, and we got rid of some, and there was like, the numbers of the adjustments were wrong initially, and...
The numbers of the adjustments did change, I don't, there were a certain number of adjustments the applicant requested go away because they'd met them through the public hearing process.
Yeah.
And we were in agreement with that approach, and...
Okay, well, I just, I would just request you make sure we got everything on there coming through.
Yeah, absolutely.
The big attachment almost crashed my computer.
If I happen to find it, I'll ping you with it.
Please do, yeah.
Well, I'm just trying to locate it here, because they're in order, but in, I believe in 1762, and I was trying to find, so I don't think the, is the staff report's not on here, is it? I think you have a two-pager on here instead of the full, but anyway. So I think, as you recall, there was some information that was submitted by the Historic Review Board regarding their decision, and I would like to suggest that we add, beef up a condition involving the landscaping between the two properties, primarily because I'm not feeling confident that the proposed screening is going to be sufficient to not compromise the character-defining features of the, of the Hackett House, and although the hotel is much taller, obviously, you're still going to be able to see it, I would like to see a condition involving a landscape screen of both deciduous and evergreen plant materials to be planted of a sufficient height that they're going to provide a screen within the six months. I don't want to see little 2-inch stick trees, or little shrubs there that are not going to provide sufficient screening, although, so then let me also caveat that, I don't want to make it to the point to where it becomes a hiding place for somebody to jump out and do something with somebody, but, because I'm concerned about safety as well, but I'd like to see it put in a, in a pattern or a plan, so it looks a little natural, and that when you're at street level at the Hackett House, even though if you look up, you're going to see that, you're still going to get the view of the Hackett House.
Okay. So what I've put up before you on the screen is the elevation, the initial elevation that was shown in the plan set for the hotel.
Yeah, it's taken a second for it to do its little...
Okay.
Yeah.
And I also have a landscape sheet L 1.0, which is the submitted landscaping design from Landscape Architects.
Yeah, so you're talking about the area, well, I can't point you...
Yeah, I'll zoom in on that area.
You're, yeah, you talked about this area, right, and, yeah.
So your, Washington Street is over here, your view along, the hotel is here, Hackett House is here, and this area is currently shown with a combination of deciduous trees and conifer trees and shrubs along the, immediately abutting the hotel. So, and then this slide, it starts to indicate what that might look like.
It's not going to look like that when they're done building, it's going to look like that in 20 years.
Yeah, and I'm saying that, not that height, but something that would, of a sufficient size, to give us some of that in six months. I'm not willing to say, okay, two years or 20 years, I'd like to see some large, something large there. Obviously, deciduous trees are going to lose their leaves, which is totally natural, but the Hackett House deserves all the protection that it can get. It is one of our signature buildings in the community, it's something that I've long had an association with, and I feel, I feel very strongly about that.
And if you were to want to tie this to a specific code requirement...
1762.
It could either be 1762, as far as the landscaping portion of the code, 1762-050A1, which is minimum landscaping standards, and then we have adjustment mitigation criteria. So one of the adjustments, as we mentioned earlier, was a reduction in wall plane projection for the Hotel South facade, which is going from 3% to 2.8%, so at least in terms of tying it to a site plan criterion for the hotel, that is something you could recommend or suggest.
I would say either one of those places would be appropriate.
Pete?
Yes?
Do we know when you go back to that L1 planting plan?
What size they are?
What size they are?
Yeah, we should be able to refer to that. This circle indicates a conifer tree.
And I remember the intent was that these are big trees.
And that is an Alaskan yellow cedar, 3-inch caliper, quantity 11. You also have red bud trees, 3-inch caliper, let's see.
Why don't you shrink it down a little?
Yeah, I should just shrink it down, huh?
Then you can't read it, though, that's the problem.
But you can.
Yeah, he can, we can't read it.
So bear with me.
Yeah, that's okay, it's okay, keep going back and forth, I'm okay.
Okay. Well, that looks like a Japanese maple, so.
Yeah.
And then...
There's just a lot of nurseries around, I think they can get something that's a little bigger, somewhere between 3 to 6, I don't know, I'm just...
I think the important thing...
I'm leaving a little latitude there.
Yeah, is to write, is to draft a condition that's flexible enough to allow their landscape architect to really meet the performance standard that you set, as long as it's not on the nuisance plant list, and as long as it's prepared by a registered landscape architect to provide the screening that you desire.
So we're not going to be planting any trees of heaven, arbor vida, or butterfly bushes?
Yeah.
Which are all on the notches plant list.
But magnolias and monkey paws are wonderful.
Not, no, these monkey paws are not native to our climate here.
Neither are magnolias.
Yes.
Is the other measurement that we're looking at back on the elevation of the Hackett House and the hotel and the trees, is the issue around the elevation of the, the end elevation?
Oh, okay.
That one, right there?
Yeah.
Is the issue to try and make those screened trees as tall as the hotel?
No, that's not, no, that is not my intent.
But part of a screen, I'm asking, is there another measurement for screening?
I'm talking about, if you are standing...
Rather than just a caliber?
We can also look at the...
That's one measurement, but then the species you get grows at a different rate.
I know, I'm satisfied with, generally with the species, you know, I personally would have liked to have seen more native plant materials there, because some of those things on there, I know they don't, they don't grow around here.
Japanese maple isn't native?
I know it isn't, that's why I said...
That's why it's called Japanese maple.
Maple, yeah. But no, my, my goal is to not get it to this height, to where it's totally screening it, maybe.
Okay, so you're not looking at the height?
No, I...
At the...
What I said, Vern, was that...
Was the caliber?
When you are standing here, and you are looking at the Hackett House, you are still going to be able to see over and see this part. I'm pointing to the design, sorry, I can't do it with a power...
I can pull up the south elevation as well.
So you can still see this, and that's okay, as long as you're looking at it through some green, green vegetation. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Chairman Griffith, we can give you a pointer, if you want to point on the screen, so we can kind of understand what you're saying. Just for a background to the Planning Commission, while we're looking for the pointer...
I don't think you want to have me...
We don't have any requirements for landscaping between, on the side of a building like that, in our code. In places where we do have landscaping requirements, we have a 2-inch caliper, which is the requirement. So here, you're seeing installation of landscaping in places that are not required in the code, and you're also seeing that bigger size caliper.
So what I was talking about, see where this, see where this car is, so let's say I'm standing, me or someone else is standing there, so you're still going to have a nice view of the Hackett House from this elevation, you're still going to be able to be, you're still going to be able to see that. I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. What I'm concerned about is if you are here, back here, and you're looking through, you should be able to see this through it, but not totally open. So it's, you're going to peek through and see the brown of the building through green.
So you want density more than you want missing altitude?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at density and caliper, so the, the bigger the caliper, and with our wonderful weather, it's going to survive, I don't think that's going to be a problem with having things die on us. But like I said, I didn't feel it was, that was not sufficiently addressed as part of the, of their view, and that's, to me, is going to protect the Gulf 5 resource, I think it's going to meet the standards that are set out in the code by protecting the Hackett House and its character-defining features. Of course, when it was built, there wasn't anything there at all, you're kind of looking out to everything.
Is there a different, looking at different points of view, if you're in one of the third or fourth floors of the hotel?
Yes, they'll be able to look down, yeah, I'm not concerned, yeah.
You're not concerned about that?
No, I'm talking about down here.
Okay, just from that point?
Street, street level or in front of the, obviously, I don't have a full plane of the street frontage here on 17th as you're looking to it.
Let me switch over to the landscaping plan real quick, just so you can see the talk to you.
Sure, I'm good.
So, yeah.
We'd also want to make sure, so as a requirement, all our landscaping plans are approved by landscape architects, to make sure that they're the right spacing and all that kind of stuff. So I would want to make sure if you do add a condition for additional landscaping, that there's some type of connection back there, so we don't say plant 50 trees when only, you know, less than that will fit, so.
I didn't say a number.
I know, I'm just wanting to remind the Planning Commission... I know, I'm just wanting to remind the commission.
I'm just saying that I think the caliper needs to be beefed up so it provides a fairly dense screen within a period of six months as opposed to two years from now or 20 years from now, or, you know, when we're all long gone. And I'm basically tying that to Seventeenth, to the Gulf Five resource standards, which regard for impacts adjacent historic properties or historic sites. The other thing I was going to mention, and I did not get a response back from Commissioner Espy, is that he had, as I recall, Pete, he had a concern, or he had a question previously about, not about the flood plain, but the natural resources overlay review that they are doing. And I was trying to look through my notes real quickly, because I made a note of that, and I was going to ask him, had you answered that concern of his?
So the applicant applied to be exempted from the natural resource overlay district because of, they're not impacting the corridor on the west side of Seventeenth Street. And they did do a delineation of a wetland that was, and they looked at the old jug handle mitigation site, which is fairly close, but not touching their site in terms of the overlay boundary. So we've prepared findings that it is exempt from seventeen forty-nine based on that. That does not mean that they don't have to do stormwater quality and control and that sort of thing. We're just talking about impacts to Evernethie Creek and the wetlands there, and the off-site wetland to the north. And based on what we could determine, based on the natural resources review that they turned in, there is no impact to the overlays.
And so are they, as, I can't, since I didn't print out the landscaping plan, is storm drain mitigation that's planted on this site?
Well, they will need to comply with chapter thirteen point one-two of the city code, which is the stormwater and manual, stormwater grading and design standards. And that involves looking at everything on their site, and they also have to do a, what's called a downstream analysis, to see where water goes to downstream, if it were to be conveyed, as they call it. They do a lot of that analysis post land use approval, but it does require detailed review and engineering in order to show compliance with the city's stormwater requirements, because we're a holder of a stormwater permit for the entire city. And subsequently, we have to apply these standards on private property as well as on public streets. We adopted stormwater grading and design manual update in 2013, I believe. And we also adopted a new erosion control manual at that time. It requires that an applicant use best management practices for how they handle stormwater. The general approach is to try to infiltrate as much as possible on site and promote low impact development standards, which means doing natural infiltration ponds on site or rain gardens, swales in the parking lot. And this is the approach that the applicant is going to be following and has proposed. The detailed engineering part of that is done post land use approval during the construction plan review process. So, and that's how they show compliance with our stormwater standards. I should also mention that those standards take into account that we are draining into the Willamette River and the Clackamas River and those sorts of things. All development is subject to those standards, and a big part of it is how much more redevelopment or new development of impervious surfaces created. And so for our new hotel and parking lot, obviously, that's going to kick in and be, and they're going to be subject to that. Those standards are in compliance with all the applicable statewide land use goals, they were adopted through a legislative process. So.
Gentlemen?
Just had a quick question, a couple of quick questions. Is there a freight entrance, other than the, it says up here in the front, the deliveries and drop off, or is there an actual freight entrance anywhere for food, beverages and all that? I was trying to see.
I assume there is, there is a sort of a rear.
Didn't look like freight, does it look like?
Yeah.
Looked like garden or plants there.
They'd have to go through the whole hotel, then. It's probably right up there.
I assume they're going to be using the loop road for some of this.
Because I couldn't see it, and I thought, would they really carry everything through where the customers or the hotel guests are going to come through?
Well, there is a rear entrance over here, and then there'll be some service, there's some service doors along the south.
See, I didn't see anything where you could deliver anything, that's why I was wondering what would that be? Because I didn't see any freight type of doors on the backside.
All right.
That was one question I had.
Yeah.
And the other thing I was trying to find, what's the actual footage between the backside of the Hacket House and the backside of the hotel?
Okay.
How much space are you talking about?
Yeah, we could probably take the scale off of this, zero to thirty-two, thirty-two, so this distance here, this graphic scale indicates thirty-two feet.
And that looks like about thirty-two feet there.
So this is a walkway, this is the back of the Hacket House, so this is an overhang. The wall plane of the building is about over here, so it's thirty-two, thirty, closer to forty more like feet.
And last question. It's not been discussed, but I was trying to picture this whole thing as I drive by it occasionally, on my way to work. There's two buildings down here, the Mel's.
Mel's.
The other one, that's not owned by the ones who own the.
Nope, correct.
Is there plans at some point, if they were to let that go, to improve the whole entire Washington Street?
You mean this corner immediately?
Right, to blend in with what's here now.
Well, in terms of redevelopment of that parcel, there's no current plan.
Okay, I know, it's not owned, that's, I was thinking, if it does, if we're doing the other down the road.
But if they were to redevelop in the future, then we would impose, you know, a design requirement.
Something to blend in with it that's currently there.
And a street improvement that met the transportation system plan. And I know that the city has certain design guidelines for certain corridors, like Malala and to a certain extent Main Street and points.
What made me think about it, is let's say we approve the hotel at this point of seventy, sixty-six feet, and it's, you can still see Hacket House, but if something was to be developed here, could that also block the Hacket House here? Or would that, could we put and impose restrictions on whatever's here in the future so it doesn't? We're not doing it maybe on the hotel, but we would on something on a corner that would block it? But I was just thinking about.
I don't think you could tie that to the Hacket House, because that decision has already been made by the, to reduce the landmark by the Historic Review Board.
To reduce the landmark?
Well, when.
The lot size.
The lot size that the Hacket House is on.
But I mean, we wouldn't build anything higher in front of it to block it, would we? Could, on this side, thinking about.
It's the same zoning and has the same standards.
I think the staff would be taking a look at that, because if it looked like the Hacket House was going to get hemmed in by another development, I don't, I don't think that that would meet the intent of seventeen forty. I think that would, that would be a problem.
That was what I was.
We would do a separate review at times.
We'd do a separate review, for sure.
All right, thanks, just things I was thinking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Denise?
Sir.
I am concerned about what Tom said here about this service factor, it's not documented.
Well, perhaps Pete can further alliterate.
Well, I would like to know where the entrance at service entrance is.
Well, we can look at the floor plan that's submitted.
Yeah, the public hearing is closed, so we're not asking, we're not opening it for that.
Okay, but I would like an answer to that.
So he's going to try.
Lobby floor plan.
There's got to be something.
We'll find it eventually.
Someplace I can sneak in. Just kidding.
Did you hear that? I'd be looking out for this guy here.
Well, you, so you have a vestibule here, rear entrance, cart storage. This is linen storage area, there's going to be some.
Looks like, is that right there, the vestibule doors?
I think so.
Yeah.
But there's no driveway up to it.
There are two parking spots that point at it, though, by the Hacket House.
It was something that maybe has not been entered in documentation.
They look like they're wider than normal.
Hasn't been entered in documentation, but I started wondering when I was looking at it, like, whoa, where do you get deliveries?
Actually, if you could go back to the, like, the landscape plan, that showed the parking around the Hacket House, and there, see, there's.
There's those two spots.
Yeah, there's.
You have a garbage enclosure back here.
I was looking at the one that's the handicap and then the one next to it that are, those two.
This is the Hacket House.
You're talking about these two right here?
One second.
That one?
These two parking lots.
Well, you can't, that's an eighty, that's a hand, you can't use that for deliveries.
But it also doesn't match, well, if the guy's handicapped who's delivering, he has a placard, he can park there. But I'm just saying that those two spots point towards the walkway to the vestibule and the rear supply, it just means that they're going to be pushing carts down a sidewalk for a little ways, as opposed to packing right into a loading zone, but, you know.
Yes, I'm so used to seeing hotels downtown Portland where you have the big trucks coming in and packing up with groceries and liquors and.
What, what, excuse me, what criteria would that question relate to?
Are you asking me?
Anybody?
Probably dealing with access, circulation.
Because I don't know, just I.
He's just asking a general question, he's not tying it to anything.
Because I was just trying to.
Well, you know, when I ask that question, that's a good question, Carrie, is what impact does it have on public policy if the activity we're talking about, service, is on the applicant's property? And the only thing I can see would be traffic access to and from a loading area, if it's going to impact, you know, the public.
Going in a lobby.
Well, they're either going to, they're either going to bring the service trucks in the back by the Hacket House in those parking spaces that Commissioner may be identified, or they're going to bring them through the Port Cocheur, and those are the two options. And if they built it another way and had a service entrance somewhere else, that would violate what the proposal is. So I'm not sure what else, I mean.
Well, I mean, my concern would be that they would potentially be blocking access to the Hacket House with their service vehicles. You know, that it's a historic resource, and because they're having a delivery at a wrong time or whatever, the historic resource isn't accessible because they've blocked the access. But I can see from the landscape plan that there's two or three potential places they could park without blocking access. So that doesn't concern me anymore, but it is a legitimate concern. And that's, that's where I would be going with it, but.
Well, there's a.
There's two or three places there that they could park, and there would still be access to the house besides the road, which, you know.
Seventeen sixty-two oh four oh says plans required, and number, let's see, six, seven, eleven says all parking, circulation, loading, and servicing areas, including locations of all carpool, van pool, blah blah, parking spaces are required in chapter fifty-two of this title. So that has to be addressed as part of that, that particular item under site plan and design review.
See, I was just thinking, well, wow, where would you take those big things through? And I thought, you wouldn't want to block all the customers coming in and out, that's safety there.
Vehicular access and vehicular access and connectivity, ingress and egress locations. And it goes on, talks about driveways, talks about site access. So I think it's fairly covered. I guess I wanted to ask you all, because they've asked for these adjustments, do you want to, do you have any questions or concerns about them? We're talking about, number one, the building height. And I'm assuming you, we have a finding that basically says that it's not going to, I mean, we did hear, the one or two pieces of substantive testimony that we did hear that applied to the criteria did talk about the fact that they did not feel that the height of the hotel was going to in any way block or impair the visibility to the hoops.
Hoops.
That's, that's the hula hoops, yes, the hoops that I heard. Because remember, I made the comment about, gee, would be nice, we got them covered again. Then we have the minimum ceiling height, fourteen feet is required, and they're requesting to twelve. Anybody have objection to that? Concern about that?
No trailblazers would be standing there.
No, it just means they don't need anything special to change the light bulbs. But I guess the only one that I have a, you know, any sort of concern with is the window recesses, number four. Because the response we got when we asked about that was, well, that's, that's the way our supplier builds them. And, you know, my response to that is, there's lots of suppliers.
Can you go back to the site plan? The first thing you had up?
This one?
No, where you showed the elevation.
Lobby four, south.
There you go.
Okay.
Except it's the wrong side.
It's on the south side?
Well, the recesses were.
Rescesses should be probably both sides.
Yes.
One second.
Ends, any place, any elevation. So we're looking for the picture that shows.
Yeah, I mean, they had the one diagram where they had arrows pointing at all the different places, but.
Yeah.
I mean, that, to me, it just seemed like the adjustment was the lazy way to fix the problem rather than finding a supplier that would, would meet the need. But I also don't think it's a particularly critical issue either. I mean, if these were, you know, adjustments for windows that are going to project into the walking area, like, you know, they want to put box windows in and they're, you know, potential, you know, head hazards or whatever, but whether a window projects two inches or four inches across the entire facade is, you know, just like.
Sorry.
I dare anybody to notice the difference between 2.8 and 3 percent.
Somebody's going to be there with their tape.
No, but they didn't notice it.
Yeah.
They measured it, and that's a difference.
Yeah.
Do we really want to get into the weeds on like, on something like that?
Well, but we do have to, at least, we have to address that the weeds are there.
Okay, once you, once you, once you address it.
Yes.
Then you want to make an issue out of it.
No, he's saying he's not making an issue out of it.
Right. That's the only one that had any concern to me of the six, was because when we said, well, why do you need it? The response was, yeah, correct.
And our standard is it should be.
Either projecting or recessed from the wall plane, two inches.
Yeah. And when we asked, why do you need that, their responses are, basically, our supplier doesn't supply those kind of windows. So that doesn't seem to be a whole lot of weight there, but again, those are.
It really isn't, to be honest with you, but.
So, that's to address those. Madam Chair, I've kind of actually been up for hours on this, and, I mean.
And you wrote stuff down?
Yeah, for the first time in my life, I wrote all my comments down, so.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, we only have, we only have two more.
Okay.
So we have the request to retaining wall from, they want it at fifteen feet to, instead of eight feet. Anybody have any issue with that one?
This is on the backside, up against the railroad track.
This is.
Because of the way the elevation.
Yes, it's because of the elevation. So you see where the red Xs are there on our, on yours there? Okay, then we have.
It's, it's.
Oops.
Sorry.
Okay. Then the last one is basically allowing the access to be on the north side as opposed to facing Washington Street.
That's the only way it works.
Yeah, I know. Okay. All right, so we've talked about those. All right, go for it.
Okay. So I'm just going to, I'm just going to go through it all. First, we. First, we, we had. Yes. We had tons of papers submitted and I felt a little like Aaron Brockovich wondering where I was going to find the memo about the hexavalan chromium. And a lot of the papers submitted, well, a lot of the information, because it wasn't paper. If it was paper, our mills wouldn't be closed. But, but what was, was drafts. End of the Oregon Trail Master Plan, the City of Portland Erosion Manual was a draft from nineteen ninety-nine. I know it's been updated since then because I was a labor union rep and had to represent a guy who failed to follow the plan in two thousand and one. Or there were just guidelines like the West Erosion Manual, which specifically stated, you know, it was for best practice, best practices adopted policy from the from the various participants. So I do appreciate the fact that especially the last bit of stuff we got, there was an outline submitted with, this is why you're seeing this paper. There's this, this sentence here and there's this connectivity. So thank you very much, sir. And, and so things became more and definitely more relevant to, to, to me and my research. But to me, it came down to, there's lots of arguments, but some arguments I thought had merit and others I didn't think had merit. So my arguments with merit. That the application had to follow the historic guidelines. That's seventeen point six two oh five oh A three A. And, and that's the one that says that if you're adjacent to historically designated property, you have to make it look like that. And I acknowledge that the applicant made a, an attempt at that. They, they put the little round window in on the, the walkway. But the Hackett House, it, the window isn't just round, it's keyhole shaped. And the other element of it is the witch's hat cupola on top of the window. I mean, that turret has a very distinct look. And so, you know, to be honest, I found that this little bit of concession they did do was a bit insulting. And then I was concerned about the massing of the hotel, which you addressed as part of against the Hackett House because I could see, I mean, I just keep, I'm, I'm a history teacher and a history buff. And I could kind of see the Hackett House turning into Faneuil Hall or, or the Old North Church where there's, you know, forty-story buildings around it and this is this little notch of, of old building. You know, the Old North Church has no relevance anymore because you can't see where you got one or two things. But that being said, that's progress. You know, the land has value, the land will be built on. And when I look at the specific words to seventeen six two oh five oh A three A, I find that they're not applicable because it very clearly says you have to have be in a district and adjacent to. It doesn't say and/or. And since it doesn't meet both of those criteria, there is no obligation to meet the look-alike standard. And I'm kind of paraphrasing that term, but I think by now everybody understands what I mean by that. So, you know, and I, that was one of the things I specifically looked at today when I went down there. I stood at the Hackett House. I looked at it and I said, yeah, it's, it's that witch's hat and, and the keyhole and but things clearly, there's a line. The other argument that I thought might have had some merit was that the whole project is unnecessary. That there's, you know, eighty percent occupancy, so there's always open rooms. And I considered it relevant because we've got forty-seven conditions of approval and six adjustments. That can be construed to be trying to hammer a round peg into a square hole. And if we don't need the peg, why are we pounding on it? But you know, again, I have to reject that argument because eighty percent occupancy means that there's a lot of people trying to get here. And if you're trying to have a convention or a meeting and there aren't enough rooms, well, even if they're still twenty percent empty, if you need thirty percent, there's not enough rooms. And personal example is when I was married, half my wedding guests had to stay over in Gladstone because there weren't enough rooms in Oregon City. So and then the other element of that is the people who want to build this hotel are in the hotel business. They are not going to build a hotel that they cannot make money out of. It's not like four of us got together and decided to just, hey, let's build a tall building and make it a hotel. It's, these are people who know their business. And if they think that it's a reasonable thing to do, then, you know, I, I don't see enough to object to that. The next one is stormwater and, and there's two elements to that. There's the flow control, where is the water going to go? And then there's the quality of the water as it goes. The city code thirteen point twelve point oh five oh C clearly exempts the site from flow control. It's inside the hundred-year flood plain and it's adjacent to Abernathy Creek and all that other fun stuff. And we have two conditions of approval, eight and eleven, which concern water quality. And one of the arguments made was they didn't submit engineering plans or, or talk about what type of filters are going to be filtering what. But the conditions of approval say they have to meet our code and they have to meet state guidelines and and meet the MPDS, the pollution discharge requirements. So I think that's covered, particularly since I don't recall ever having seen actual engineering designs for, for stormwater in any of our applications. I've seen a couple cross-sections of a bio swale, but never like, and the pumps are going to go here and the filters are going to go there and this is the list of things that they filter to what, what point. Staff may see those, but I've never seen them in any of our plans. And then there was a letter submitted from CRW, well, a letter from CRW submitted, from CRW to us, about the fish kills and the concerns about the temperatures in the Clackamas. And I found the letter to be deceptive, frankly. It talks about, you know, the fish that died in the Clackamas and, and the concern about the flow rates and all that. The Clackamas River Water Providers have lots of checks and balances in place to deal with how that is going to happen. You know, if it gets to a certain level, who's got to turn off their water, faucets, all that sort of fun stuff. And also the particular fish that happened to die that were all over the news weren't native fish. They're Mackenzie River fish, not Clackamas River fish. They were diseased when they went into the Clackamas and they went into the Clackamas because it was cooler than the Willamette. So it was actually, you know, it was a place of refuge where they went and ended up dying. So at this point in time, I think there are checks and balances in place to to, to handle that. The need for connectivity was another argument, basically across the, Pete, can you pull up just the overview of the, the whole thing, the very first slide you were showing us? Yeah. The need to connectivity, basically from Seventeenth to the, to, to the depot. And the applicant said, well, there's plenty of room. They can go ahead and go through our parking lot. Look at all the different paths. And that's wonderful, except if you've ever tried to go from the train station to a Mariners game or a Seahawks game and walk through their parking lot while people are trying to get to or from the game, you know that you're taking your life in your own hands. And.
You're talking about the facility in Seattle?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the same potentially is true here. I can, you know, if we look at the, the wa- the waterfront master plan, which has been submitted, and you just look at the, the facility, I went up on the train depot and right across on the other side of the train depot is the access to what was called the Crush Hour Wetlands. And it's a, it's a gravel road right now, but it goes right to the underpass under two oh five. And the train depot is already halfway up the elevation. It is a wonderful location for some sort of pedestrian and bicycle overpass to then connect to the cove. That means that people will be coming to and from that side and they're going to want to go somewhere. And I can, I, I think that it's, you know, it's, it's necessary to have a dedicated path, whether it's a sidewalk or a gravel walk or whatever, that goes across the backside of the property, the west side of the property, that connects from the, from the depot to Seventeenth Street. Because Seventeenth Street will never go through. That's one of the arguments that I think everybody's made, quite honestly, it won't go through. And that's one reason to reject, reject the Abernathy Realignment Plan that was in one of the urban renewal things. Is it, the road, the, the railroad's never going to let a road go over the railroad, over their tracks again. But it's a very legitimate jogging path, bicycling path to, to, you know, and, and the train station is used by commuters who ride their bikes and they get on the train, they go into Portland, then they ride to their office. And I don't think, you know, letting them go through a parking lot where people are trying to go to or come from a conference or hoping that they're just going to go down the sidewalk and out to Washington, which hopefully will be very busy. And I don't want to have bicycles in conflict with pedestrians or joggers if we can move them to the backside of the, of the thing, direct into Seventeenth, down to Abernathy and into the, the trails and, and on. So I think the connectivity argument across the back of the back of the property has, has merit.
So we're going to have a condition of additional, condition of approval?
Well, condition of approval forty-six is the one that talks about connectivity. I just think.
But doesn't get there.
It doesn't state that it's a dedicated path. It just says that there will be access.
Yeah.
And I think it needs to be a dedicated access. Should be, should be added to forty-six.
Okay.
When you say dedicated, David, are you talking about an honest to God. To the city?
Well, no, I, I mean, an honest to God sidewalk.
So you actually see it there and you can use it, not that, oh, I'm guessing, is that a path?
Or, or, or I guess I'm supposed to just go down through the parking lot and hope nobody backs into me or drives into.
Right.
This spot, whether it's a gravel path or whether it's, you know, a sidewalk, this is the place that people go to not be in the parking lot.
You might also add that it should be appropriately signed so people do know where to go.
I, I'm, I'm sure that the developer would immediately want them not in his parking lot if he has to build a sidewalk.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. The other one that had a lot of discussion, a lot of concerns is the end of the Oregon Trail Master Plan of nineteen ninety. That is, I don't know, I guess the, the elephant in the argument. And I would say, looking at at it, the drafts and all that, is the emphasis of it is on the east side of Washington Street. It pretty much just says on west side, visitor services. And we heard testimony even from those in opposition that a hotel meets the visitor services needs. So, and, and it's largely aspirational because the vast majority of the land in that plan is not in public control. It's in private control and it's a hope that should we have some control, that this is what would be done to it. The other element to it is that master plans typically have a lifespan of twenty years. Things happen. The world changes. Seventeenth Street got cut off. That was not anticipated in the master plan. And again, as I mentioned, the, the urban renewal plan talked about Abernathy realignment and you know, yeah, it goes through this property, but it dies at the railroad again. Any plans, it's just going to die at the railroad, so it's no different than Seventeenth Street. So I, you know, the, the reality is the Oregon Trail Master Plan is forty years too late. It should have been in place before we decided to turn it into a dump. Although I guess in a way the dump's kind of an acknowledgement of what it probably looked like when all those wagon trains came in and dispersed. The natives looked around and went, wow, thanks, guys. I, I just imagine how many broken wagon wheels and busted churns and.
It was a swamp.
Well, yeah. So people just threw stuff in it to get it out of the way. I mean, we, we started destroying it as soon as we got here, but in any event, it but it, you know, the other side of it though is the city's clearly been using that master plan, whether it's been fully adopted or not, as a form of guidance. They've made decisions like the, the the train depot, the, you know, to, to acquire certain properties, to plan, to have control, to make these things happen. The mill. Well, I remember that. It's the weirdest thing in the world to see a mill jacked up twenty-five feet and operating. Anyway. So it, it has some bearing and some relevance, but I don't think I, I think it's a good guidance document at this point, but too many things have changed with the property. The, you know, we've got Home Depot in there. We have Seventeenth Street closed. We've got, you know, just, we have a dump there. You know, the bus barn has shifted. A lot of things have changed, so I think, you know, it's time to just redo the master plan. And so I, I just don't find it to be a binding document. It has value, but I don't think it's binding. And then the other thing, kind of to summarize all this, is the Hackett House isn't the only historic thing that's there. The other historic thing is the railroad. Railroads was there twenty years before Hackett House. And as I said, I'm a historian and I travel around and one of the things that my dad and I used to do is go to old towns, ghost towns, old mining towns. And one of the things that was the dominant feature in those towns was the railroad hotel or the hotel in the, in the town. And they were always looked different than the town. The town would be, you know, clapboard, wood siding, and the hotel would be granite blocks or cement. And, and the, the buildings would be one or two stories, but the hotel was four stories. And it would have gas light instead of candles. And it was always something different than the town itself. Governors would travel for days to come to those hotels to stay in them and, and open them. I don't necessarily think the governor's going to come to this one, but because of that, I don't, I don't see that the hotel hasn't, you know, really has a need to fit a particular time and, and, and look niche. I mean, these are Western hotels that I'm talking about, but they always looked like they were from the East Coast. You know, they tried to build the Biltmore back in Goldfield, Arizona. It's, you know, it's and it's the only building still standing. Most of them are all gone. There's this four-story giant block long, you know, building. So so from that, at this point, I'm prepared to prove the hotel has conditioned and adjusted.
You want to go through that again?
I think.
Sure. I wrote it down.
I think you need to roll the tape.
God.
So Vern.
I'll take a little less time than Damon, but I basically agree with a lot of the things that he said. The, the one exception, and I hope you don't mind if I pick on one point out of your.
You can pick on them all. That's what we're here for.
I won't do that. The traffic pattern through the hotel from the
The depot.
The depot. Your, everything was fine, but the difference when, when you compared it to a stadium in Seattle that's moving fifty thousand customers into the stadium and three hours later, four hours later, you're moving fifty thousand out is a whole lot different than a hundred-room hotel that probably never, everybody's not going to leave at the same time. There'll be regular checkout times, but the volume is totally different.
It's different on both. It's, it's a complete scale difference. There's going to be five joggers and twenty cars, not fifty thousand and. There's gonna be five joggers and twenty cars, not fifty thousand and twenty.
So, I've got your analogy.
So from that, I'll, I'll take the, I did most of my work preparing for the, what the citizens, customers, had for, in support of the hotel. We had a group of twelve to fifteen ladies and gentlemen that have been in the city, in and around the city, and have worked on many of these plans, auxiliary plans that are around. And, to a person, they all supported the idea of the hotel. They had some reservations, they liked the orientation that we're with right now, you see the hoops, and, and that, and a lot of them are in the restoration of older buildings in the city, so it's their hobby, that type of thing. They, they came down pretty consistently that they were in support, go, go for it. So with, with that, I'll make mine extremely short, I'm inclined to support the project as it's proposed.
Zach?
I'm finding it cough, so I'll keep my comments short also. I organized a conference a couple of years ago at the community college, and it was challenging bringing outside speakers in without lots of options, or just options in general, for people to stay. So I welcome further options, not only for sake of economic development, but friends and family, too. People like options, and just having another set, even if it's just two, is, I think, an improvement. I, you know, echo Vern, that it was, it's been great seeing lots of positive community support for this. Really just checking off the boxes on, on what would be big concerns, including the height. Hearing that there, that was, things like that were not a grave concern was great. I try to use Amtrak as often as I can, and it's great to get up to Seattle or down to Eugene. Yeah, again, I echo that, it's not, it's not a, I'm, I'm thankful we have an Amtrak station, but it's not very busy, so I'm not really concerned about traffic per se, because that, if anything, their parking lot is much too big for the volume that they're moving.
Hope springs eternal.
I agree, I agree. Let's keep the, the station as long as we can. Beyond that, I am fine with a lot, and we've, I know, talked about this ad nauseam, so I'm prepared to support moving this forward.
Ben, just real quick, I, I would like to preface, when I was talking about traffic coming from the depot, it wasn't just Amtrak people, it would be, assuming that pedestrian overpass was built, it would be people coming from Cove development area, jogging like some loop, or biking, or whatever, so I, I, I understand that there wouldn't be-
It could be people from the hotel-
Yeah, going the other way.
Looking for a place to run, or-
The restaurants, yeah.
-place to run, or someplace to walk, someplace to just get away. Tom?
Me?
Yes, please.
I'm glad Damon went first, because now I don't have to say everything. Damon obviously does all his research on this, and as a downtown business owner, I know that during the summer months, I hardly get anybody from Oregon City, it's almost always tourists. I usually ask everyone, I had three people from Oregon City in August on the street, twelve in September, and almost everybody come, I've had people from Utah, and all over the United States down there, and I typically ask them where they're staying, and usually it's in Portland, and they're just out there visiting. So I agree with Damon on the need for connectivity. Walking through a parking lot, I go to a lot of hotels, too, and you walk through, carrying your luggage behind you, through the middle of this, rainy or whatever the season is, it would be nice if there was a path from the train depot that went along the back and came up here, also to take them over to the Cove, I agree with you on that. It just would seem cleaner than making people get off, walk around, in and out of cars, all that, not that all the cars are leaving at once, but still, it just is nice to have a pathway to walk, even if there was one down the center. So then, I know that Jonathan Stone has been here in support, from the Downtown Oregon City Association, and as I said, I'm a business owner down there, so I know it's nice to have something local. I don't think they're ever, I'll be there for my Halloween store, so that's not the point, it's nice to have a hotel local in the area that's close. I mean, we already have one, but this is gonna be something that would provide more housing, so I'm for it at this point. I wish we could've had it more historical, but I understand what you said, too, that we're moving forward in time, and we can't always try to recapture the past, we need to, to do what we need to do. But I think they've tried their best with the brown colors and the neutral tones. So, anyway, over to Bob.
You don't mind if I go over yours in detail?
Would you like, Ben?
I think you should do whatever you need to do.
Well, as a matter of connectivity, as you put it, I think that's, belongs in the public policy aspect of it. I'm uncomfortable asking private property owners to-
He wants you to make sure you speak into the mic, because yours is turned the wrong way and relays.
I don't want anything to go onto the record, in case this backfires. But when it comes to things of, of circulation and, and, and traffic, that, that's a matter of public policy, and we should be engaged in buying right-of-way and things of that nature, to make sure that it's permanent and planned the way that, that, that we see it. The only aspects that I was concerned about was, was the, the impact on public policy, which is traffic and, and drainage, and the code requirements in terms of protecting the hoops, or observation from, to be seen from wherever it's gonna be seen, two oh five, or what have you. I think they've done a good job doing that. It's a, I think frankly, it's, it's a, a, a pretty good job, what they've done to, to lay this out, and I think they were kind of, went over backwards on the, the Hackett House, you know. This is gonna be the anchor for commercial and development at that end of the town for years to come. And so I'm, I'm in full support of this, I, I think it's a, an exercise in, 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 in good design. I'm a little concerned that we took so long doing this. I mean, we've gone around the, at the dance floor on this thing, I won't say ad nauseam. We've done our homework. We've hung in there and gone through a lot of testimony, and a lot of it was detailed, and a lot of it was non-applicable. And I think the commission is to be commended for that. And, but I, I think that in any future development reviews, that we ought to be aware of the time that it takes to do these things, and I think it's, I think it's unreasonable. And I'm, I'm gonna stop at that, because I got a few other comments later on in the, in the, the meeting, before we adjourn, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it.
Just real quick, I would say that we do have an actual hook in connectivity on this particular piece of property, because when they got control of the property from urban renewal, there was requirement of-
Absolutely.
Chairman Grif?
So, it's different than, than just the regular development.
Go right ahead, Pete.
Just wanted to bring up the two exhibits that were part of the record with respect to circulation and bicycle access, if I pull those up on the screen?
Please.
Okay. Where are we? So, September twenty-fifth, we had an exhibit from the applicant with respect to bicycle route, and they submitted this exhibit here. And then we had the circulation plan, which I believe is-
Wait, wait, go, go back.
Yep. Sorry, I'll, I'll switch back over to that.
Okay.
Yep. Sorry.
It's okay.
It was a detail.
Because when I looked at it before, I thought-
There it is.
You got-
So this was the-
Right.
One of the, this is repeated elsewhere in the record, but this is the circulation plan, which you can kind of refer to, and then the-
And the blue line again is, since we are missing the key, because it's off the side.
Yeah, all right, sorry.
That's okay. You can just tell me what the blue line is again.
So the blue line represents the actual sidewalk built in the site. The light blue line is also a interior parking lot sidewalk.
Okay, that's what I was remembering.
Yeah, which you can see in the landscaping plan, and, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, I just don't find that adequate for safety.
Yeah, the one that goes around the back, should, there should be one in the front.
See, I, you mean in the back, on the railroad?
No, I'm-
I think there should be something going from the railroad, just, just basically paralleling the railroad across the back of the property.
He's talking about here.
Yeah, I-
On the red line.
I have concerns for safety for the opposite reason, because an unlit trail like that, that is not visible, that's where, you know, bad stuff happens.
But there's gonna be parking lot lights, and-
Parking lot's on the parking lot.
Which is next to the, the sidewalk.
So, just so you know, we have standards for the width of a sidewalk within a parking lot, it has to be at least five feet wide, and if you add a sidewalk, parking, if you add a sidewalk in that location, it does have the effect of pushing everything to, towards the front of the site, because we have minimum standards for driveway aisles and parking lot depths, parking space depths, and that sort of. So, in order to maintain those dimensions, it would, it would shift everything kind of to the, towards Washington Street, would require some significant revisions.
Maybe we could change the entire plan.
Yeah.
I don't think it would do that, but-
No, I, I, I'm in agreement with you on that, so, if you want to add it as a condition, I am-
Well, I just-
Totally supportive of that.
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, a bicycle, bicyclist isn't gonna do that. A bicyclist is gonna ride right down the middle of the parking lot.
Yeah.
A pedestrian, jogger is gonna do the same thing. And-
My point is, though, Damon, what, what right do they have to come onto private property and use it like it was a sidewalk?
Because, when they took control of the property-
Yeah.
-from the urban renewal-
That was a requirement of approval.
-that urban renewal put on them to get the property. So they have a legal requirement to have public connectivity.
Yeah, did you, that's what he's saying, it was part of the sales agreement, so that's-
I, I missed that.
Yeah, that's where he's going, so, anyway. Let them, let, let, please, let them finish, please.
Well, she's gonna correct or adjust my assumption, I believe.
Yes.
Please continue.
Any obligation that is set forth in a deed is not a land use approval criterion. Those are private property arrangements between private property owners, they're not approval criteria.
Even if one of the private property owners is a public entity?
Correct.
So, if they don't do it, what is the recourse? The other entity can sue?
Correct.
And reclaim the property? Foreclose on it? What?
Whatever the terms of the agreement provide.
Well, I, I, I think he's got a point about adding it as part of connectivity, I think it, it meets the criteria, and I think it could be put in. So we'll leave it to you to wordsmith it and get it in there. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna close this by basically saying a couple of things. I did review the end of the Oregon Trail Master Plan, and I'm pretty sure that I was here, working at the city, when we adopted that. So I was looking at it from the standpoint of how it applied to the west side of the street versus the east side of the street, and I'm, I agree with you in the sense that, yes, there was a discussion that maybe someday there was going to be a facility there, like a hotel, or something to that effect. So I, I don't have an issue with the trail plan being, it is applicable to this application, and I think that everything that you said is kind of where I was going with my notes. The design guidelines, I hadn't looked at for a long time, I looked at those, and again, it's mostly applicable to the trail site. I would not, even back then to today, I would not have recommended that the, a hotel or any building there mimic some historic structure, because I have a real problem with things that are trying to look like they're not something.
Paper things?
Yes. I will say, however, I mentioned at a previous hearing, that I had gone by the new Hampton Inn in northwest, adjacent to, very close to the AIA office, and I was very pleased with the fact that they used brick. It fits into that neighborhood, I would've loved to have seen something like that here. I think that would've been more applicable, except for the black, I didn't care for the black, but regardless of that. So I'm gonna have to disagree with three of my fellow commissioners, I did not find that the testimony we received compelling, nor did it agree with, or address the criteria. It's fine and dandy for people to come in and tell us how much they love having a hotel, or they'd love to have a hotel, that does not help me in my decision-making, and I find it really difficult to, to try to figure out how that fits in somewhere, and I, and I, it just, it, it doesn't help. So, three of you said that you think the hotel's a great idea, I'm, I'm looking for you guys to tell me how you think this meets the criteria, so that when we make our final decision, we have findings of fact and conclusions of law that meet this, that we can defend, and liking it, as far as I know, Carrie, and you can tell me if I'm correct, is not a criteria, whether you like it or not. So I'm, I'm a little bit disappointed by that, I, as I said earlier, I found only two of the public testimony actually addressed the criteria, and that I was able to use to help me in my decision-making process. So it's something that I tell, when people ask me, what can I do when I come to testify, I tell them, please address the criteria, that will help us make a decision. It's not that I'm not in support of the hotel or against the hotel, I'm looking at standards and criteria. I'm not, again, as I said, with regard to the adjustments, I'm okay with the height, because again, I understand about the floodplain there and the fact that they need to elevate, you're still gonna be able to see the wagons, with or without cover on them, and maybe someday we'll get money together and we'll put covers back on them. I'm a little bit not okay with the window issue, but I think at this point, I can live with it, I, you know, again, it's, like you said, who's gonna measure it for, you know, that small amount? I would've liked to have seen, you know, a more traditional style of window, with something that didn't look like just big openings in the side, but be that it may. I am okay with the retaining wall height. I guess I forgot to ask this question, we're not, and maybe you can help me with this, Pete, we're not looking at, didn't specify what the type of fencing was, and I was looking for that, because I'm hoping it's not gonna be, you know, the bare, bare minimum chain link, that it will be something, you know, more applicable, and something more appropriate to a very nice hotel.
Well, yeah, chain link is a prohibitive material.
Okay, that takes care of that. I think that my concerns with the revised conditions of approval from the engineering staff regarding roadways and drainage, I will say, as I've said at every meeting, I have a concern about traffic, I always do, because we don't, we only look at the site-specific traffic, we're not looking at the traffic that's flowing from everywhere else to get there, and how it gets there because of Oregon City's constraint. So it's just, I'm gonna put it on the record one more time, that the traffic that is going to primarily come from two oh five, probably, is probably going to have a, a, a little bit of a negative effect on the rest of the community. And I specifically say that from the standpoint of Greenpoint, I say that from the standpoint of the McLaughlin neighborhood, of course, which you know that I live there, and I see it on a regular basis. So I, I don't find the traffic study says that there isn't gonna be a problem, I think there is gonna be a problem. You know, time will tell. So I think that's really all I want to say about that at this time, so if we are ready for a motion of some sort, with those two additions of conditions of approval that we talked about, I am ready to support that.
Before you move on, I want to talk a little bit further about this pedestrian trail. Twelve oh four, one ninety-nine says, pedestrian bicycle accessways are intended to provide direct, safe, and convenient connections between residential areas, retail and office areas, institutional facilities and right-aways, neighborhood activity and transit streets. I would suggest to you that it will be Washington Street that will be the retail area. I would suggest to you that it will be Washington Street that will be the retail area and the applicant has proposed a bicycle path or multi-use path along Washington Street that will accommodate both pedestrians and bicyclists, as well as an opportunity for them to move through the site. I don't know what's gonna be on the north side or the backside of this mixed use, but there may be retail there too, I would assume, on the ground floor. So, moving people through the site rather than on a path next to a railroad tracks may be the safest way to get through. I also suggest to you that, I'm not sure that our code requires the path to be in a certain location, other than that it be, provide a safe and convenient connection between active uses. So, I just wanna point that out to you before you move forward and give Laura an opportunity to say anything about the path. And then if you do wanna amend the path, we're gonna need to talk further about language because I'm not sure the, the cross easement language here covers the same thing that you're talking about. So, those two points are all I wanted to make.
Okay.
Damon?
Yeah, I, I guess the, again, it comes back to reality versus planning and all you have to do is look at just about any place that's planned and the path that's worn through the grass because people take the shortest path rather than go up to a corner or whatever. And I see that, that, that people are going to probably do that if they're gonna transit, if they're gonna try to get to 17th Street. And depending upon how we develop in this area, I, I just, what I envision is people coming, say, from Clack McCove, coming over the, the path or going all the way down Main Street to 15th and wanting to loop back. And when they've got an opportunity to wait at an intersection, to cross 17th, to go down the busy Washington Street, potentially fighting with everybody while they're jogging or riding their bike or cutting up 17th and going through the parking lot in the back of the building, I think over the course of time, people are going to go to the park, especially because we're putting hundreds of houses in the cove. So, there's potentially a very regular loop path that people are going to develop. And I'm trying to be proactive in getting them, you know, A, decreasing the amount of conflict traffic, you know, pedestrian bicycle going opposite ways on Washington Street in front of the, the retail. And also, you know, just promoting people being out and, and about. So, if, I, I guess, the next part of the question is what do you see is the difference between my vision and what the language says? Is there, because I, I guess the other thing is, is I do recognize that there, the, the land where that connectivity requirement is imposed is not the entire site. It only goes about halfway across the site and the other half is, is, was previously on property. So, what do you see is the difference between my vision and what the language says?
Well, I'm, the only thing I was pointing about the code is it talks about connections between places and, and bringing people to where places are active.
Right.
And we've worked hard to get these buildings towards the street, so we're gonna have activity there and I'm not sure we're gonna have activity out near a parking lot and abutting a railroad track.
Right, and I agree, I agree with that. Right now, there's no reason to go across the back into that parking lot because you're just gonna jog across into the park and you're gonna come to a crick and a chain link fence and you're done. But there might be something, you know, whether they're, maybe they're going to work at the, or going to a conference or whatever at the Planet Falls thing, the big tall building. Or they're, they work at, or live in, in the cove and they wanna go to Tony's or whatever and they don't wanna fight with the, the people that are going into those retail outlets at the corner of Washington and Depot.
The other thing is that I don't, the, the design doesn't show a path there and what the, what putting the path there does to the design, I can't speculate and I'm not sure we can speculate. The topography, the, how that adjusts the parking spaces, I don't know. And so, I hate to, I mean, I would hate to speculate when they have identified two paths here and satisfy the intent of the connectivity provision.
Right, and, and I would, I would postulate that if they have dedicated this distance for the pedestrian path and the bicycley path, then that distance already exists within the footprint of their design. And whether it's front loaded against the, the retail or back loaded against the back of the parking lot, those five feet or four feet or whatever are already there. Now, I haven't drawn it out, but, you know, but the other side of it is, is, you know, I guess the question is, is how much of that, how wide is that dedicated area? And is it just dedicated to that or is it, you know, is it another, we made it eight feet instead of six, so now there's room for bicyclists, but we're still, it's, it's still a multi-use path? So, you know, if we could come up with some language for it, we're, we're, you know, I, I would hate to say something like, you know, a safe pedestrian connectivity shall be dedicated between the Depot and 17th Street. You know, and, and by saying dedicated, I mean, it isn't gonna have cars driving over. I mean, that's my concern. I mean, I'll be, I'll be flat honest, my concern is I can see people cutting through the parking lot and the cars and the people getting in conflict, whether they're on a bike or jogging. And so, whatever can be done to de-conflict them is my concern. And I don't know necessarily how to do that short of putting a path alongside the railroad.
Damon, would you let me add to that? We have coming out of the, out of the Depot, a little blue line which comes down to Washington Street. Would it, would you be satisfied if we addressed that and accepted that as the connectivity? Does it have to go from the Depot through 17th? People are gonna naturally be attracted to Washington Street from the Depot. See that, that, well, it might not be blue, it's a dashed line.
Right, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, so if we came down from the Depot, I don't know if there's a sidewalk there, I think you have to fight the traffic.
No, there's a sidewalk there.
Yeah, there is?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you used that sidewalk and came down to Washington, even though it's off, off the, the site that we're talking about, couldn't that be considered to be the connectivity that you're, that you're looking for?
Yeah, well, I guess, I mean, I've been thinking about this and, and the concerns
What I'm getting at is I don't wanna hold up this, this project.
No, 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 yeah.
Based on this condition.
Right, and, and I guess my thought is, do we have, oh, he's, it's a mumble, talking to him. I'll wait for Pete, so I wanna, Pete, can you pull up the, the whole site with the parking lines and everything?
Which one?
The, there is one of the maps where, where it actually has all the parking stalls drawn for the whole site.
Okay, sorry.
The site plan?
Yeah.
The graphic rendering, I think, was in here somewhere.
There.
Yeah, it went bigger.
No, and, yeah, you can make it bigger, but yeah, that's the idea. So, perfect. So, the northeast, the part, the, the driveway in out, that's all the way up by the railway station, all the way up, now come toward, there you go, your hand was on it for just a second.
Yeah, you're talking about the one right there.
Come down, there you go, right there.
Up, up, down.
The driveway part, there you go.
Yeah, it's a drive aisle.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think we can direct people down to Washington Street if at that location there was like a drop gate, you know, where the person, if they're leaving the site, they pull up and an arm goes up and they drive out. If there's, if it's open, I think people are gonna go through it, but if there's an arm there, bicyclists aren't gonna drive around it and pedestrians aren't gonna jog around it, they're gonna just keep going. That's been my experience is that if you put any sort of barrier up and then people can still circulate out of the parking lot.
Yeah, just so you know.
And I guess I'm designing somebody's project and I shouldn't be designing it, but...
Washington Street's a collector level road too, so it's got a wider right of way dedication requirement, a wider sidewalk requirement and a dedicated bike lane requirement.
I just, I've, I've just seen too many places where people cut through, so, but I, but I think if, if, if there was a pressure drop arm or something there, then people would avoid it. Whereas if it's open, the bicyclists and the joggers are just gonna jog it. So, I'm, I don't know, and I don't know that we can condition that. So, maybe we just leave it alone as long as we do have the line in there that there is connectivity through to 17th Street and let them build it and adjust as they need to. Maybe they'll, we'll say, yep, we got too much traffic, we need to, we just need to put in a thing.
Well, okay, so do we have a motion?
How do you wanna phrase it? I'm not, I don't see the, is that the, all the numbers? I'm having trouble coming up with the proper wording. My motion that we accept the...
No, remember, is I move.
I move that we accept the Abernathy Place Hotel Mixed Use Development Planning File CP 17 dash 0002, DP 17 dash 0003 and NR dash 17 dash 0004. Tentative decision and continuance, is that part of the word?
No, just...
No.
Drop that. With the conditions?
With the two amended conditions.
Two amended conditions.
17 and 45. And, and, and I'm not conditioning anything about a dedicated pathway, the, the language that's in the, in, in 45 as it exists with the N 17th Street that the applicant agreed to earlier because they actually proposed the N 17th Street instead.
But I'm adding mine to condition number 38, which involves provide landscaping plans, et cetera, et cetera. And I'd already said what that was. So, amending condition number 38.
Does that include direct staff to come back with findings?
No.
You don't?
No connectivity.
No, no, he's talking about the findings, not about the connectivity, he said he's not putting it in there, yes, we will be doing that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That goes along with the motion?
Yes, so is there a second?
Second.
He's, okay, we've got a second, now you can...
Now, I have a question of, did we put three conditions into this motion or two?
Well, there are, there are two that were previous adjustments, 17 by Replinger and 45.
Right.
And then she has added a new...
An amended condition on 38 involving landscaping, yes.
But it does not include...
No, I withdrew that.
He said he's not putting that in.
If, if the commission would so like, we can have the wording on the, on Chair McGriff's condition for you, so we can get it clear in the record.
Well, so conditional, condition 38 will be amended to add something along the lines of use of large caliper deciduous and evergreen trees as approved by a landscape architect to provide a dent screen in six months.
Yes.
That's pretty vague.
I'm leaving it that way on purpose.
The, you know, my preference would be that we end it at, by a licensed landscape architect and leave out the dent screen in six months with a acknowledgement that that was your recommendation and we can include that in the findings, that there was a recommendation that the, that the selections, the selections provide a dent screen in six months.
Yes, okay, I'm okay with that and, and here's my, my reason that I am because I am confident that one of the applicants is going to be contacting me later on to assure me that that has happened because I, I know that, I know that that is something that they would do to reassure me. And they're nodding.
And it leaves open with what, what the thing is, it's nine months, the intent is there that it's not going to be 20 years before you lose.
Yeah, I'm definitely not going for the 20 years, I wanna be able to see it.
But on the other end of that range of 20 years, a six inch caliber tree is not gonna grow very much in six months.
No, but it'll already be there.
But they'll already be there. Anyway, so, okay, so we have a motion and a second with two...
I forgot what my motion was.
That's okay, I, I know what it is, I've got it written down here, so, any further, before I call for the question? Okay, so I'm calling for the question. Mr. Walter, if you would be so kind.
Commissioner Guy?
Aye.
Commissioner Levy?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Chair McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
I know, you got to be last, normally I'm last.
Yeah.
I know, there you go, I'm gonna have to speak to Pete about the salary. Okay, so we're done with that item, we are going to take a...
So, I just wanted to announce then we'll come back with the findings for our November 13th hearing date.
Okay, so findings will be re-reviewed on or before November 13th and I'm gonna call for a six minute recess. So, stand up and shake your money makers, whatever.
There we go. I like that you used school bus yellow.
In business, and on the agenda, we have a facilities report by Wes Rogers from the Oregon City School District. So Laura or Pete, one of you, take it away.
Thank you very much for here just to introduce Wes Rogers from the Oregon City School District with the presentation for you. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and talk about Oregon City School District and the future of our schools. My name is Wes Rogers, Director of Operations for the School District, and I'm, I'm just so happy to be here to talk about our bond renewal efforts. I'm sure some of you already know that back in two thousand, the School District passed a sixty-five million dollar general obligation bond to build the new Oregon City High School, which is currently on Beaver Creek Road, and also did improvements at all of the other schools in the district. Those bonds are going to mature in phase, in three phases, in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty. And when the bonds were refinanced by the School Board in twenty thirteen, which saved the district patrons about, oh, three and a half million dollars in interest costs, the board created an opportunity to do a bond renewal effort three years before, up to three years before those bonds matured in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. So that's why we're here and talking about bond renewal for the School District is because we have an opportunity to do a bond renewal before all of the bonds mature in twenty twenty. I just wanted to give you a recent history of the bond renewal activities. Some of you may not be aware that we've been very active in beginning our education specification committees and facility assessments that date way back to the latter parts of twenty fifteen. And I won't go through every one of these steps, but you can see that we've had a long-range facility committee that met for over a year, that presented some report to the board in October of twenty sixteen, which you'll see in number six there, and the, some of the items that that advisory committee reviewed. We also did extensive facility assessments by engineers and our architecture consultant during the summer of twenty sixteen, studying not only the conditions of the buildings, but also how do these buildings meet today's educational practices? And are they supporting those educational practices, or are they hindering those educational practices? And how does our education specifications, which we developed earlier in the process, how do those relate to our conditions of our buildings? We then spent some time talking about visioning and what we would like our buildings to look like. We had multiple visits with students and talking about what their desires for our schools would be, talked to staff members, and also got some community input about what they would like to see in our schools going forward. We then went and did a extensive community engagement program and had several workshops dealing with career and technical education, as well as science, technology, engineering, art, and math, as well as talking about our fields and grounds, because our fields and grounds are used extensively by the community here in Oregon City, as well as throughout the School District. And then we also met at each elementary and middle school community to talk to them about what their needs were and to talk about their site-specific challenges. As I stated, the School Board received that meeting, or that report, in October of twenty sixteen, and, and approved it shortly thereafter. And in the midst of all of this, these activities in twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen, we also did two voter polls and with registered voters, one in July of twenty sixteen and one of March of twenty seventeen. And currently, we have a bond development committee that's working, a bond development task force, which is finishing its work up in November, and it's going through a lot of the details and information that previous groups have, have worked on and recommended to the School Board, and hopefully going to distill that information down to a bond scope proposal to the School Board that would use as a preliminary bond program that we then take to the community in twenty eighteen to talk about a possible bond that would be on the ballot in November of twenty eighteen. I wanted to spend some time talking about some of the improvements and some of the issues that we've run into in our buildings, just to give you a sense of the conditions. These were from some of our assessment work that done in twenty sixteen, as well as having our engineers and architects review each site as well. I'm sure you understand that safety and security is our first and very high priority for our sites. We want our students and staff to be safe, and we want the public to be safe when they enter our buildings. And we want to control the access to our buildings as well. And so you'll see safety and security throughout my presentation tonight is a very high priority and need of the, of the district. Definitely want to have community use of our buildings as well, and our, our buildings are not always laid out for good community use, because sometimes you've got to walk all the way through the building to get to the community use area versus having the community use area closer to the front entrance or having better entrances for that community use. I'm sure some of you realize that a lot of our sites, we have school buses and parents interacting in the parking lot, which is never a good idea, not only for vehicular traffic, but also for students or parents who are walking through the parking lot. We have some security and technology needs. We have not done any significant technology upgrades since the bond in twenty, in two thousand three to two thousand five, and currently, we have some security system needs as well in some of our schools, as well as the typical roofs and mechanical systems that need upgrading and need, and to make our buildings much more efficient and reduce our operating costs. And you can see that down there about utility usage and renewable energy and so forth. At the high school, we intend to do, even though the high school is new, but you have to remember, it's, it's approaching fifteen years' age, and so it looks in great shape. I think we've done a great job of maintaining our high, our main high school on Beaver Creek Road, but it was built fifteen years ago, and technology has changed dramatically since then, as well as the career and technical education area, and as well as technology. And we really would like to incorporate some of those enhancements to the high school and in addition, make it safer and have some more security features in it. And we also have two other high schools in our School District, Oregon City Service Learning Academy, which is like located at the old King Campus on South End Road. And then we also have the Clackamas Academy of Industrial Sciences, which is at the Jackson Campus, the old high school campus, but it's in the newer gym wing. It'd be on the corner of Jackson and Tenth is where the Clackamas Academy is.
New building of the old.
Yeah, we call it the Building C, but you would not know the numbers. You would know them by the, they used to call it the New Gym back in the day, so. Middle school improvements, this is really the heart of our bond renewal campaign. Our middle schools, Gardner Middle School was built in the fifties, and Ogden Middle School was built in the seventies, and they were built really as junior highs for about a maximum capacity of six hundred. Since then, we have reconfigured the School District because of budget constraints and, and issues due to lack of state funding for schools, and we moved the sixth graders up to the middle schools to get better economy of scale. Unfortunately, we didn't increase the common spaces. So the cafeterias stayed the same, the gym spaces stayed the same, and essentially, what we did is we just took modular buildings and put them on site and then said, go forth and get crammed into hallways that were never built for up to nine hundred students, as well as gym spaces and cafeterias. Doesn't make for the most efficient situation, but it does allow us to, to spread our fixed costs over more students.
Yeah, fifteen-minute lunches aren't good.
No, not at all. And that, these are aging facilities. I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to go into Gardner Middle School and say it's served our community extremely well since the fifties, but it's over sixty years old and starting to crumble, literally crumble. It wasn't built to last this long. And then also Ogden, because of its constraints on its site being on a dead-end road, and also having restricted common spaces, it needs significant renovations as well. Same issues there around pedestrian traffic, as well as parents and school buses interacting at the same entrances and exits. And then we'd really like to replace our portable classrooms with building additions that are part of the building and aren't outside the, the main building, as well as the other issues that I've talked about around technology, roofs and mechanical systems and so forth. I'll make sure. One of the things that we really want to do is, and I talked about educational adequacy before, is our, our buildings are really lacking in the sense of they do not support today's educational environment. Much research has been done in the last fifteen years about the, how facilities can, can promote and support education of students and not hinder those, those educational practices and outcomes. And we are sorely missing those innovative approaches to building design, because our buildings were built forty to sixty years ago, and they're not flexible spaces. I mean, I have people tell me all the time, Gardner Middle School looks like when my dad went here. You walk down a hall and you got classrooms on either side. It's got the same library, it's got the same gym space, it just happens to have a sixth grade building out, out off the back end, and that's the only difference. And that relates again to our making the building sixth, grade six to eight and increasing their size. We don't have any outdoor learning activities. A student at Gardner really has a very limited ability to go out into the environment and do any type of science project or any type of engineering project, and to do that on site is almost prohibitive, because it's not a secure site by any way, shape, or form. And the, the spaces for that are not developed and are, are very rudimentary at best. And then you can see as well that if you've ever tried to play soccer or football on the field, in the late fall, when it rains, it's, the field becomes unusable, and we just don't have the funds to improve it to a point of making it around the field, as well as not having any career and technical ed or science or technology type courses that we can offer. We have the traditional science lab that you would have probably taken biology or physics in, and that still looks pretty much that same way with maybe some equipment enhancements.
You know, we're all too young for that.
Except I went to both of those.
Well, that's, that's the advantage of having a sixty-year-old building that hasn't been improved. You can talk to multiple generations, and they've all had pretty much about the same experience, so.
You go twice.
Yeah.
Other things that we have is, and we have, we have rooms in our buildings that don't have any natural light whatsoever, so there's no connection for the teacher to have with the outside world and know what's going on out there. Our gyms and cafeterias, as I mentioned, common spaces are undersized, as well as our modular classrooms being separated from the main building. And you can see some of the other things about limited sightlines and, and flow of students in Gardner Middle School, because the hallways are so, are so narrow. One of the ideas that we have, and I, you may have, if you watch what the School Board has been dealing with, we've actually are looking at replacing long-term in a, in a future phase of the bond measure, of bond measures, would look at replacing Ogden Middle School. And the reason being is that the value of Ogden Middle School in its current condition with some, some renovation could be made into a very attractive elementary school site. And with all the planned development in the Holcomb Boulevard area, as well as in the near end on Beaver Creek Road and so forth, we could easily bust those students down into that elementary school. And it already comes with a really large gym space for an elementary school and has common spaces that would accommodate those, those students. But it's also fairly new. It's one of our newest schools, built in the seventies, and, and it has some really attractive traits to it as a, as an elementary school, but as a middle school, it doesn't function that well. And it would be a good investment to keep the core of the building in place, do some major renovations, and I think it would be a great middle, a great elementary school for the future. I get asked occasionally, when would we see dirt moved and construction begin? If, if the bond, which was hopefully going to, expected to be on the November twenty eighteen ballot, if it were to pass, when would we see construction start? And we are, would hope that we could have our elementary school packages ready, at least some of them ready by the summer of twenty nineteen, as well as maybe some of the middle school improvements would go into design phase in twenty nineteen, and possibly some of the high school improvements could be taking place in twenty nineteen as well because of the way we could. could be taking place in 2019 as well because of the way we could phase those. And then in 2020, we would be finishing up our elementary schools and high school improvements. And then that's when we would kick off our construction projects of both of the middle schools. Our intent in this bond is to completely replace Gardner Middle School onsite and taking the athletic field, the football field, and then there's an adjacent softball field behind that. And those would be taken offline for a couple of years as we built on that side of the property. And then in phases, tore down the older part of the school. And then eventually, the older part of the school would become the fixed parking lot and the new athletic field and so forth. That gives you a sense of that. That's a pretty aggressive schedule. My guess would be as we get into more design work and seeing what the construction environment is in the greater Portland area, if there are constraints on the amount of contractors that are available and so forth, we may see this schedule slide a little bit. But I would say probably by 2022, we'd have all this construction pretty much buttoned up and done. So what's going forward? What's happening going forward with our bond renewal efforts? And we really refer to ourselves in a multi-phased initiative right now. We see that we have way more needs than we have ability to raise money through a bond. So we consider the new high school to be our phase one. It's done recently enough that we're really proud of it, and it looks great, and it's going to last a long time. But we see a new phase two that we're working on currently. And that's in a phase called the Bond Development Committee Task Force. And Doug Neely, he's on it. Brian Shaw, City Commissioner is on it. And then we have about 20 other community members and parents who are on the committee as well. We had a launch party on October 10th at the high school. And then we, last week, had a needs analysis and went over a lot of our assessment scores and site-specific issues with the group. And then this, tomorrow night, we'll be talking about what is a bond? And what kind of bonding authority does the school district have? And what has it done in the past? And what could it expect to do in the future? And then on November 7th, that's when the task force really digs in and says, what is it that we want to propose to the board? In the sense of what are your priorities? What are the scope, the major projects we'd like to see accomplished? And of course, that has to be tied to some type of a financial amount because we know that voters in Oregon City are willing to support the school district, but we have to show that we're managing our funds well and that our designs and our priorities match with registered voters and the community is interested in. You'll see the school board on its regular November 13th meeting will be considering that proposal. And then they'll have a week to study that. And then on a special board meeting on November 20th, they'll be taking school board action on that proposal. If it's not amended, or if it's amended and approved, then you would see a significant community engagement campaign in the winter, this winter, and into the fall of 2018 when the election happens. And then in August is when the school board's got to make its final decision about what we want to specifically include in our ballot title and our description of our scope. My guess is we'll be tinkering again with what we're going to do and matching that up with the latest information that we have about the community. And then the school bond election is actually November 6th of 2018. And then number seven is, I think the community can expect to see future phases of what the school district would like to do going forward. We, the community, we have significant schools that are, again, our average age is 54 years old. We can't wait another 20 years to do work again on our schools. We'll need to be back talking to the community, I would guess, in seven to 10 years about what our next phase will be. That is the end of my presentation, and I'd love to answer any questions you might have. And also wanted to direct you, we do have a website that we just kicked off last week. It's ocschoolbond.org. And if you go there today, you'll get linked into our, the beginnings of our school bond renewal documents and the process that the bond renewal, or the bond development task force, what they're involved in. You can start reading some of the information that we have, and we're posting new information in there just about every other day or so. You can see their minutes and see what they're up to and can read some information about some of the activities we've been taking care of since 2015. So love to answer any questions you might have.
Got one?
Go. Damon raised his hand first.
Go ahead, Bob.
What's your projected build out in terms of student population?
Yeah, that's a good question. We have a demographic enrollment projection done every year by Portland State. And I don't think it's any surprise to anybody that our demographics are changing in Oregon City. We continue to average less than one child per household that's built in Oregon City. Currently, we're in about the 0.7 range. Case in point would be that the new development that's built, I guess, would be to the north of Holcomb Elementary that built up pretty quickly. We received one student, one elementary student from that development. And it's the elementary students you really want to grow on because they stay in your system for 10 to 12 years. We'll be glad to take a junior high student or a high school student, but they're only with us for five, six years. Whereas if we get kindergartners and first graders, we've got those students in our family, our community, for a good 10 to 11 years. So we're not really seeing, overall, our elementary school is actually flat and declining a little bit, and our middle school program seems to be growing a bit as people are moving into the community. I think we see more middle schoolers than ever before. But it's hard for, you could think about it as a first time home buyer. I bought my house here in 1985. I won't even tell you how. It was a five-figure amount to buy my house. No way that you could buy a house like that in Oregon City today. And the newer homes that they're building are not really, the most of the buildings we see are not conducive to a new family with young kids.
So your population right now is what?
The student population? It's about, if we include our, all of our school, it'd be about 7,300. And that's less, much less than when I came here in 1985.
7,300?
Yep.
And with the new bond, you're prepared to go out to what?
Oh, well, we're gonna, we're not, we'll add some capacity, but not a lot of capacity because with our build out of a middle school that handles 900 to 1,000 students, we'll be able, that should last us for almost 10 years. And then middle, and then elementary school wise, we're really not scheduled to grow much on the elementary level until about five years from now. And that's in really specific areas that are offset by other areas of the district that are not going to grow. In fact, Holcomb Elementary is going to be reducing quite significantly because of the closure of the housing programs there on Holcomb Boulevard.
One last question. This measure that capped the taxable.
Measure five.
Measure five?
Uh huh, yeah.
How does that impact your bonding?
That affects our operating levy. Our operating levy is a fixed levy. It never changes. It's 4.96 in some decimal points per thousand, and that's set by virtue of measure five. And you can only go up to $5, so there's really not a lot of extra capacity there. Bonds are out, general obligation bonds are outside of that measure. So we, technically, you could ask for $100,000,000. I mean, that wouldn't be realistic, but yeah, there's no limit on general obligation.
But you won't.
No. We asked for $2, yeah. We asked for $2,000,000. If you were here in 2000, our final winning campaign was on $2,000,000.
So I'm a teacher, so I'm in the classrooms.
Yeah.
And I'm seeing 35, 40 kids in a class.
Right.
You're not adding capacity, which means you're not adding classrooms, which means you're not shrinking class size. And on top of that, I see you converting one of your middle schools to an elementary. Where's, are you going to build another middle school? And you already lost.
Yeah. If you're talking, of course, we've got three distinct levels. The high school, it can handle, it's currently at about 2,100. Phased correctly and used a little differently, you could get up to 2,400 in there. And again, our high school is not scheduled to grow that significantly in the next 10 years, a little bit, but not significantly.
Why would you want it to get that big?
What's that?
Why would you want it to get that big?
Well, when the state of Oregon only gives you a certain amount of money, then you have a lot of fixed costs that have to be spread over either, you can spread it over a bunch of schools, and then you can dilute the amount of money you have. Or you can build bigger schools, and you've got more money available because your costs are spread over a larger scale than if you build a smaller school. You'll see almost every new high school that's built now, if you see the new ones that are built in Washington County and in Sherwood, they're the same size as ours, around 2,000 to 2,500 students. And elementary schools, ours, we try to target at 600. We like those not to get any bigger than that if we can. But that's not a big elementary school in Oregon. You'll see them in the 800 to 900 range as well. But it's all about how you stage the school, how you separate it, how you schedule it, and students may not feel like it's that big of a school. But speaking specifically to Ogden Middle School, the reason we want to relocate it is, one, have you ever been to Ogden during school? When beginning, you know, it's a nightmare to have that big of a school on a dead end road. Raises security issues for us and safety.
I couldn't figure out why they would have located a school there. I know it was in the county because it wasn't in the city when it was built. And I thought, that is the dumbest place to put a school.
I don't know either, except I agree. As far as putting a middle, a 900 student middle school there is, even when it was 600, it was a problem, and is even more of a problem now. And we do have a right of first refusal on some property up off Holcomb Boulevard that we would love to build a middle school on.
Okay. You've got roughly 80,000 square feet of dead space in the old high schools. Are any, I mean, I understand they're seismic and all that, but is there any idea of tearing down and rebuilding on the site?
We are using actually almost every square foot that we can at Jackson Campus. We have a, the Clackamas Academy of Industrial Sciences is handling one part of it. We have an alternative high school program in the other part. And then all the offices that support our special education program are in another part. So there, we are using Jackson completely, except for the second and third floors, which we don't want to put anybody in. We can't, we don't have the money to maintain those floors either. We are stretched as it is.
And I guess, my concern is that there's been a general abandoning of the core of the city by the school district. And you've got property in the core. And if you were to, you know, even if all you did was tear down and rebuild a single story in that with the efficiencies of, you know, energy and technology, it just seems like there would be, you know, something more, you could do something with that. Whether it is, you know, because you're talking about, well, the other high schools. Yeah, one of the things other high schools are doing is academying the schools. And this is an industrial academy, and this is a college prep academy. And this is a, you know, and, you know, case is already there. And it, their carpentry shop is one of the classrooms. And they're just hammering into the tables that are there. And it just seems to me that that site is a great location for a real school again.
Sure.
You know, I want to be a real kid.
Yeah, I'll share some of the struggles with building in the core. Currently, to build an elementary school that has the appropriate common spaces, the appropriate outdoor spaces to support activities outside of the building and so forth, and to provide safe and secure entrances, as well as separating vehicular traffic from school buses and so forth, you need 10 acres. There's not, I don't think I know of 10 acres in the core that are available today. We sure don't want to buy homes and tear them down. Jackson actually was considered to be a third middle school site. But currently, if you want to build a middle school with those same types of characteristics and provide a broad-based program that can meet the needs of today's middle school student and middle school program, you need 15 to 20 acres. Again, it's hard to find those spaces in the core. If you remember, the schools we built in the core, that's back in the day where we got funded. We had funding from the state, as well as we could run and operate a school of 300 to 400. And it's just not financially, you can't stretch your dollar as far with a 300 to 400 kid elementary school. That has very limited player areas. If you look at Barclay, if you look at, you look at Eastham, which was an old elementary school and stuff, the player areas are very, very limited. And so it's difficult. We would love to have that available space in the core. We'd love to build a school in the core. Unfortunately, right now, it's difficult to find property that can meet our requirements.
I'm going to jump in because you guys have been telling us this for the last, how long I've lived here. I think that the school district needs to take the opportunity to think, literally, I hate this term, think outside the box, and take the facilities that they already have and see how they can be repurposed and rebuilt on. Because we have more people moving into the McLaughlin neighborhood that have small children. And one of the biggest complaints I hear is that they do not like their children being bused out of the neighborhood. And it seems to me that this plan is still predicated on, you would go back to your very first slide. I saw just so many holes in that map that bothered me because it says to me that the school district is disinvesting in the community by building out to the edge. And you know this because I've talked to you about this before. And I feel very passionate about this, and I feel very strongly about it. If your meetings weren't the same meetings as our meetings, I'd be over there.
We'd love to have your input.
I'm here.
Yeah.
I need to be here. We meet at the same time.
Yeah, well, you can always submit written comments. And you can come tomorrow night as a public. We do, public people can come tomorrow night and provide their views.
Pete's already got my time.
Okay.
Pete's already got my time.
But again, I'd have to stress that we have to meet today's needs for children. And we need a site of 10 acres to do an elementary school.
I would challenge you that you, that, I would challenge that proposition because I'm pretty sure we could find examples of reinvestment in cores of communities where they've taken existing schools. So.
I'm sure there are examples where they don't have a choice. They have to build in the core. We have a choice. We can build in the core and build a small school that costs more per student to operate, which means we'll take more resources away from other schools to support that school. And it won't have the same program as the school on the core because of.
The community does what they want.
We are trying to provide the best opportunity for kids. And so if you can come up with an idea how we can build on five acres in the core, we'd love to do it reasonably with the appropriate amount of money. And we can operate it efficiently for the rest of the school district because we are responsible to the entire school district, not just to one specific neighborhood. And we'd love to have small neighborhood schools. The state doesn't fund us that way.
Well, and again, going back to Jackson, I'm not saying you build an elementary school there. I mean, why not, you know, purpose-built buildings that support the high school? I mean, there used to be auto shop there. There used, I mean.
That's been replaced at Clackamas Community College. Our students go over there.
I understand, but I'm just saying, when I went to that high school, there was a full metal shop. We used to build bells and a foundry. There was, you know, band, there was several industrial things. I mean, it was, and it was a packed school. And boy, trying to get from the third floor of the old building to the second floor of the new building in 10 minutes flat.
Pretty hard.
And you stopped at your locker along the way.
Yeah.
Why couldn't be something that, you know, you program in, say, the first two periods of the day, it's industrial stuff, and then those kids are whatever, the, maybe it's all computer science, and it's all coding classes, and it's, you know, and their rooms are the kids can learn to network and stuff. And then they jump on a bus, they go on up to the other campus, and they do the other classes. And in the meantime, those buses come back for the fourth and fifth periods with the other load. I mean, I'm just kind of with what Denise is saying. I think, I think that there's been a lot of, and I know you guys have looked at a lot of things, but I think there's some abilities to use, you know, the facilities that, you know, people just aren't wanting to think about. And in Southern California, that's one of the things. And in LA, it's this high school just became this high school, and it did these things. And then the neighboring high school did the other things, and then they would swap students, which was kind of a pain in the butt. But it meant that they had like teachers who were science teachers, teaching science, and science.
We have that.
Would you like to show me what school they can use a Bunsen burner in? Because there's not a single one that has gas in it anymore.
Do you, are you saying that we don't have Bunsen burners at Oregon City High School?
Well, you have Bunsen burners, but the students don't use them.
Well, that, that's a different issue than if we have the ability or not. And let me assure you that every, you're talking to the person who operates the buildings.
Yes.
We do not have an empty building in the school district. They are completely being used or leased out for revenue purpose. So I do not want to give the general public the impression that the building, that the school district is wasting its buildings and they're just sitting there unused. They're used all the time. The very things that you're describing are happening at Clackamas Academy for Industrial Sciences. A student can go there, not have to ride on a bus, one hour a day, back and forth between campuses. They could take a full program at Clackamas Academy for Industrial Sciences, graduate with a full diploma, and they can be a licensed welder. They can be a CNC machine operator. So these kids now have more opportunities than probably they've ever had before as far as getting those experiences in depth like you're talking about. Now, at Oregon City High School, they don't offer those same programs because those kids go down to the other high school for those and they can stay there. They concentrate on the other types of science programs that we're running. And when they can't get it at our high school, then they are going over to the community college and it's a great partnership. We have them, they get multiple credits. We have advanced placement programs at the high school. So we are, we are pushing the envelope when it comes to opportunities for students. We have way more opportunities for students now than we had when I came here in nineteen eighty-five.
Well, you have way less than when I graduated in nineteen eighty-one. And so, like you said, oh, if they want industrial stuff, they'll just go to Case. But when the kid's holding on to the wood board and hand sawing it because there's, don't even have power saws in their carpentry class, that's not an improvement in education.
And you're, have you been?
So what I'm saying is, and I, and I teach at Case and I, I'm a substitute, so I've been in every school in the district. I think that there are opportunities to build purpose-built stuff for Case to not be trying to do industrial things in a classroom. You know, and, and for, you know, when, when you rebuild anything, whether it's at the high school, whatever, you know, there are no computer training classes. There's one, one computer training class, but no networking, no, I mean, it's like how to operate Word, how to operate Excel. They're business computer classes, not, I built a computer when I was at the old high school. We, we soldered together soft boards and circuits and built a computer. There's nothing like that. That's what Case should be doing. They should be.
I, I'd be more than happy to take that advice again. And you can visit Case and give them that, give them that input as well. I encourage all the planning commission to come and participate in our meetings and give your advice and give your counsel. We'd love to hear your input. I'm, it was a very open process.
Yeah.
Burn, Burn was next.
Yeah.
Yes, I would like to take a, have you give us a picture about taxpayer dollars from property taxes?
Sure.
And I think you've divided it into two categories. You've got an operations.
Operating levy, uh-huh.
Under five dollars per thousand.
A little less than five dollars, four point nine six and change.
What I think I'm hearing here tonight, or you're talking about, is the other bonding that is for operations or facility.
Correct, yeah, for building construction.
Capital expenditure in building. And I believe you said two dollars or you could.
Correct.
I don't know what, but my question, after setting it that as my basis, what are the, what is a resident paying for property taxes today with the three bonds that are near retirement?
Okay.
And then the transition where you're going to bring in a new bond? And I take it you'll probably replace it with three separate bonds over that generally the same timeframe?
Well, I'll give you a little history and then I'll kind of give you an idea of the future. So the, we didn't have a bond measure active in the year two thousand. We'd already paid off all of our existing bonds long before then. And so that was going to be a brand-new bond. So it was asking the voters for two dollars a thousand that they hadn't paid in recent history and they approved it. The highest that rate ever achieved was about a dollar eighty-three. And since then, it has come down over the years purposely by refinancing it, just like you would refinance your mortgage. We've done that twice, saved millions and millions of dollars in interest payments for, for our constituents, for our patrons. And currently, this year, on your tax statements, I think you're going to see about a dollar fourteen. So you'll pay a bond, a construction bond rate of dollar fourteen, and we said it shouldn't, should be around two dollars. So it's been a lot of assessed value growth in Oregon City that's really lowered the rate a lot further than we ever anticipated. There's only one outstanding bond in Oregon City School District. And so it's going to mature in three phases, three steps. So a third of it in twenty eighteen, a third of it in twenty nineteen, and a third of it in twenty twenty. And then in twenty twenty, it'll be completely off the books, that bond levy. The board has set it up when the last time they refinanced the bond in two thousand thirteen, so that there would be a purposeful step down. If you think about it, there's three steps down to zero. So that the board could then say, as we're stepping down to zero, then we can have a replacement levy that either maintains the current rate or it asks for a reinvestment similar to what we asked for in two thousand. And that, I think, is the question the Bond Development Task Force is struggling with is, how much do we ask for? Because even if we could ask for two dollars a thousand again, we know that we could not meet every need in the school district. And we know that today, that would be a big ask for, for a taxpayer to say, you're currently paying a dollar fourteen and we want you to pay two dollars. But we think that there might be a program that we could put together where I think citizens in the Oregon City School District might be willing to say, I might be willing to pay some more than a dollar fourteen. We'll have to see.
The track record is you're, you're collecting about that two dollars right now.
A dollar fourteen.
A dollar fourteen, okay.
Correct.
You've converted it there already. And you might replace bonds up to about that same category.
Well, that's the question is, you know, that's the question is how much would, and again, we want to make sure that we're in tune with the community and what, you know, we know that there's a, there's a financial limit to what the communities can support. It's finding that vision and then finding that price point where somebody, I can afford that. And with, because we know that for working families, it's tough right now. And, and so we want to make sure that we're in tune to that. And we want to, and we also want to pass our bond levy in twenty eighteen. We don't want to have to go back out again.
And the other part of that equation is you're having more taxpayer, more housing built.
More assessed value, correct.
More assessed value, not only in the city, but also in your school district.
We are.
Which is.
That's correct.
Growing to some degree also.
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of partitioning happening out in the, in the near county areas, near the city limits. That's true. And we do take that into account. We assume assessed value growth of around three percent, which is very conservative, but we'd rather be conservative than, than, and then saying we're going to grow more than we actually do. Because then the rate's higher than you project.
One, one last question and I'll finish. Is the measure five, the, the cap rates in there affecting you as far as compression? You're going into compression?
Yeah, we have not had, we had a, just a very minor amount of compression related to the two thousand eight bubble.
It's not killing you?
No, that's not killing us, no. No, it, it really did hurt some school districts in the two thousand eight bubble because of the drop in real market value was so significant over the assessed value. But it did not hit us nearly as hard, just a little bit of that. What we find out is, and most people don't understand this, is we don't receive those property taxes for operations. We don't receive those directly. Those go to the state, they're put in a school funding formula, and then it's, and then it's, you know, put in a big pot of money and then it's divvied up so much per student.
It's more complicated than what we try to understand it.
Yeah, but that was part of measure five was to go to more of a state-based funding system.
Thank you.
Tom? Couple of things.
Yeah.
We just had our Park Place Neighborhood Association meeting last week.
Yeah.
I've been involved with that for many, many years. And the biggest concern over there is, I was just adding it up here quickly. We have, and these are estimates, about a hundred and forty-seven homes going in the Sears area.
Sure.
The airport area is about two hundred and forty-seven. The Park Place Concept Plan calls for another fourteen hundred homes.
Right.
That's a total of seventeen ninety-four times point seven, that estimate you gave. It's one thousand two hundred and fifty-five point eight kids. Is that possible?
It's possible, but would I say that they're all going to show up in three years?
I know.
They're not. I mean, that's why, I think that's why you're seeing that we want to make sure that Ogden Middle School can handle nine hundred to a thousand students. We want to have a, an elementary school that can accommodate that kind of growth. And again, we can take six hundred elementary school kids at, at a repurposed Ogden. We also own an elementary school site right next to the, I guess it would be the eastern or the southern boundary of the golf course. The district owns eleven and a half acres, which is a great elementary school site.
Golf course in that area? Where you?
Yeah, it's right. It's Old Acres Lane, it's that private driveway. So if you go to the end of that, you'll see eleven and a half acres of the school district.
So the other concern is part of that was the fact that I, either it was sold or leased a Park Place school was, is now a charter school. And they kept saying, people were asking, well, will they bring it back into the school? And would they kick out the charter school that's currently there? But the feeling was from some of the people I talked to, it seems the city divested itself, or the school district, divested itself from some buildings. And then all of a sudden, they feel, oh, we got to build another one.
Sure.
Why they didn't use the original ones.
We, we closed Park Place School because it had two hundred and seventy-five students with a principal, a secretary, a custodian, and the utilities to support it. And again, the fixed cost of operating a building at that time, we're in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand dollars a year. So that's a lot of money to spread over two hundred and seventy-five students when you could go up to Holcomb, where at that time, there was probably four hundred and fifty to five hundred students. And you're spreading some of the same fixed costs, about five hundred to six hundred thousand over twice as many students. So you could see from a business operating principle why you would say, we have to get, we have to get right-sized so that we can save as much money as possible and offer the program that we'd like to offer to our elementary students. Again, the challenge with Park Place is the same challenge we have with Barclay and Eastham, which is it's a small school and it's a small site. And if we repurpose Ogden, a student going there is going to have a, a much richer experience because it's got much bigger grounds, it's connected to a wetland, it's connected to green space. We can do great outdoor classrooms there for, for science and for all the other things that come along with that. It's got a great gym space. It doesn't, you go to Park Place, it's a cute school and I like it. I'd love all of our schools to be two hundred and seventy-five to three hundred kids, but we don't get funded that way in the state of Oregon.
It's interesting that a lot of people don't understand how that Park Place situation took place. In our Trailview area, there's all these people whose kids go to, what is it, Holcomb Elementary.
Right, right.
And they keep saying, well, it's getting crowded there, it's too bad, we don't have more space there.
And that was true until they announced they were closing the, the Oregon City Manor Housing.
Right.
Authority. And that, we have around, I think it's sixty-five students in that, in that. And those are going to be relocated. We don't expect that any of those students will stay in, in the Holcomb school. So again, you'll lose sixty students over the next year and a half. So it's, and Holcomb is, one of the challenges at Holcomb that you mentioned it is, if you're acquainted with the school, it has three modular buildings on the backside of it that are not being used currently because they're in such bad condition. If you were to bring those back online, the school has sufficient capacity to handle the growth in the short term for those hundred and forty-seven or so homes that are go, go into the, in, off of Holcomb Boulevard. Not nearly enough to handle all of the Park Place Neighborhood Concept Plan, but it's enough.
It's interesting that with the Park Place Concept Plan, I wrote an article about a year ago that was in the Oregon City News, that there is nothing for outdoor activities, even at Holcomb School. And we were thinking, why, it's too bad that on that Park Place Concept Plan, that they can't make a walk-around park like they do over on Gleason Street. I can't think of the, the lane of the golf course.
You've got some slope issues and stuff as well.
It's the end of the Oregon Trail. That's the Oregon Trail is the Holcomb Boulevard.
Right through the middle of Holcomb.
They're tearing down that forest and there could have been something there for kids to go walk through a forest, not the whole way down the, the slopes, but just in that upper area there.
No, I think that there's, there's definitely, I think as we look at, that's not very far from the new Ogden Middle School site. It'd definitely be a theme that we could put into that middle school is, and, you know, the Oregon Trail and.
That's the last forest since being torn down as we speak. All summer long, they've been cutting it down.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
The other thing I wanted to just mention, I got my tax statement today.
Good, great.
No.
Okay.
It's already up to five thousand and I was just figuring out here. So by the time I really fully retire, my house, my taxes are going to be as high as my house payment. And so every time a bond comes up, I vote no on every single bond because of the fact that it impacts my taxes. I thought when I retired, I wouldn't have to make a house payment, but now my taxes are going to be the size of a house payment.
Well, let me give you a counter, because you probably know that I probably have a talking point for that, don't I? And that talking point would be is when you want to sell your home, I'm sure you want to sell it for top dollar.
That's only when I'm dead.
Yeah, well, maybe your heirs will, your kids or whoever is going to receive those proceeds. But a community needs a vibrant and a, 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 a school system it can be proud of. And currently, when you drive by our schools, I'm going to tell you, be honest with you, some of those schools look pretty tired. And if you're looking at educational opportunities and you're thinking, I could send my kids to a charter school, I could send my kids to a private school, or I could send them to a private, or to a public school, the local public school. And we take all of the kids who come in our door. But when a, when a, a community member has a choice, we want them to choose us, not just because we've got a new building, but because we, our kids are getting a great education for what we're doing. And I think we do. Our high school's got the, one of the best graduation rates in the state for the high school of its size. I think you'll see that we're doing things, pushing the envelope when it comes to getting the best bang for the buck that we can, that we can. And I, I think we are, we're positioned to go forward with a facility that can support those, those teachers. I think it's a great idea. But I totally understand that when you look at your entire property tax statement, you look at that and you go, wow, I am paying a lot in property taxes. I would share with you that for Oregon City School District, if you compared us to all of the other metro area school districts and you added up all of their property taxes rates, their operating, local option, and bond rates, Oregon City has got one of the lowest. I think it's in the bottom five of all those school districts. So we're trying to, I mean, we, we, our bond rate is low compared to other districts. If you drive over to Gladstone, you'll pay a bond rate that's three times higher.
I exaggerated, but I go down.
But I totally understand that's, and that's, that's the challenge we have, is to find that spot where it's not a financial burden for a family, but it's an investment that we, that we can show we can.
Is Park Place the only charter school or you allow, does the school district allow charter schools?
We have two, both Clackamas Academy of Industrial Sciences and then Oregon City Service Learning Academy are both district-operated charter schools. So they're open to any student in the state of Oregon.
What's the difference between a charter school, I guess?
Well, the one's an industrial arts-focused school. That's a comprehensive high school. The other one is more of a, I don't want to call it a credit recovery program, but it's for students who need a smaller high school experience and are struggling in a large high school environment or other mitigating factors.
There's a lot of students that cannot handle the hallways, that just freaks them out.
Well, just, just going into the parking lot and seeing all those cars really gives them anxiety.
Is there an option for some of those smaller schools to be used as charter schools? Or is that something you?
Well, we don't have any schools left to use. I mean, where all of our buildings are occupied and being used either by district programs or people who are leasing the school and using it for education purposes.
And then redoing it, I think it was.
Right, well, when we, when we, when, our goal is to renovate Ogden here in this next couple of years and make it a better middle school. But also set it up to be an elementary school in the long term. And then in a future phase, maybe seven to ten years, we would ask for another bond and specifically around rebuilding Ogden on a new site and then repurposing that, that site again to be an elementary school, wouldn't take much. And that's about the time we see the Park Place Neighborhood Concept Plan really taking hold and really being built out. I know that has its own other implications for the city, but for us, you know, we need to make sure that we have ability, capacity for those students.
Thanks for bearing with my questions.
Oh, those are great, great questions, great questions.
Rita, before you go, did you want to say anything about this?
Well, I.
You, come on up.
I hate to tell Riley.
Come on up here. Rita and I worked together for a few years before she retired.
But Ogden and.
Hang on, come on up so you can get on the tape.
You've got to do it the right way, you know.
Yeah, you always got to come before the microphone.
Oh, not with my loud voice. Ogden and Holcomb both opened in 1966. So they, you said Ogden was built in 70?
Oh, okay.
But it, it's a little bit older than, they both opened the same year. And actually, what happened was that Holcomb wasn't finished when it was supposed to open. And so we were in the Ogden building until October 15th or something like that.
And then you moved over?
And then we moved over to Holcomb. Yep, we had an in-service day and a moving day at the same time.
So it's a big moving.
Yeah, but anyway, it, it, you know, I, I have told a number of people, if I ever win the lottery, it's going to go to Oregon City Schools, and not all, but I'll keep looking.
That's good, you deserve it.
But, but I would love for this school district to somehow be the best school district in the, in the country. And it can't do it without money. And, you know, my tax statement came today too. And we fund schools in a sad way. We really do. I don't know the answer, but it shouldn't keep us from having the ability to offer what needs to be offered. So, anyway, thanks Denise, I'm good in Holcomb.
Thank you.
Thank you, good to see you.
For the record, Rita Miller.
Wes, thanks for the presentation. The declining school rate is, I think, especially disconcerting. Any thoughts on contributing factors?
Could you restate that question again?
Declining school rate and attendance.
Well, you know, it's a, it's a multifaceted issue because you, you have to have, you know, from what I observe, again, I'm an operations guy, I'm not completely there, but I'm, I do get involved in those meetings because we do want spaces that kids want to come to. And so if you have a student who gets anxious when they come to school and they see a lot of people that they don't know, and, and it's hard for them, then they may not be as committed to coming to school as, as a kid who really likes, they've got, you know, they, they play sports and they really like the, the opportunities of a large high school and, and the size of it doesn't bother them. You might have students who are in crisis at home and so getting to school is really difficult for them. And, and having partnerships with community groups that can get them to school is really important. But it is a challenge, it is a challenge. I don't believe our attendance rate is as bad as, as other districts that actually, you know, they have just as many challenges as we do, but in some cases, you know, are just, are struggling to get kids to school. Because it takes a, it takes a community effort, it takes a partnership between the, the school and the family to get a kid to school. And not all of our schools, you know, some kids have a hard time in some of our schools. So. And I think if you have smaller schools and, and the state made a commitment to fund smaller schools, say, we're going to fund elementaries of 300 kids a school and we'll pay for them to be built, or we'll pay for them to be operated at that way, then I think more, I think you're going to see attendance rate go up because I think kids feel a little bit more connected to a school that's smaller and it's closer to their home. Totally understand that.
Back in my day, we had a truant officer, it was Gordon Harris. He did not get caught by Gordon when you were out and about.
Yeah, we do have attendance court now, I don't know how active it is this year, but in years past, we actually have a retired judge. And it's a legal proceeding where we can take students to attendance court and with their guardians, legal guardians, and we can actually have them go through a proceeding that really makes it sort of serious, like you need to be at school. And that has been used at times, it's one of the tools that they have for that. As well as just calling, we, we've really upped our game on calling home through automated efforts as well as having a personal touch and calling students who we think might be in crisis and having a hard time getting to school, calling them personally and talking to them, finding out what's going on and trying to get some supports around them so that they can feel like, hey, I can go to school, I'm supported, I can check in with somebody when I'm struggling, I don't need to leave, and I don't need to be scared about coming to school.
Any idea of how many students are attending schools outside of the district through open enrollment?
Um, that's a, you know, those statistics are hard to come by because private schools don't share their statistics with private, with public schools. I know that in our, our charter school environment that we have, I would probably say that the two, the three that we have, Alliance Charter Academy, I think a little over half of them are Oregon City students and the other half come from outside of Oregon City School District.
Oh, interesting.
And then our Oregon City Service Learning Academy, those are in the 90 percentiles, those are Oregon City kids that are, I'm just going to a different setting, that's a little more successful.
So we're pulling from outside of this district for some cases.
But we do have, there is a thriving private, thriving, there are private schools in the city. And I know that those are, are, they are still in business, so I assume they're doing okay.
Yeah, I think the biggest loss is the Jennings Lodge Candy Lane kids who go to Gladstone.
That's, yeah, through the Open Choice Program, that was a program developed.
That's their community school, really.
Yeah, well, they're closer.
Yeah, the school boundaries don't make a lot of sense sometimes.
Okay.
Tom, you asked your question.
Nope, I'm done.
Yeah, so I just had, well, I've got, I've got a little list. So the first slide that you showed, which I was asking you to go back to.
Do you want me to go back to it?
Yeah, so what's happening with the other schools? So why are the other schools not be considered as part of the facilities plan? So King, Barclay, Eastham, Park Place, are they, have they been evaluated and...
Um, yeah, they're, they have been assessed, I think the only one we didn't assess, if I can remember correctly, I know that Park Place was, I know the King Campus was. I don't know if the Eastham Campus was because the Eastham Campus is, I think an initial assessment of that was that it'd be so expensive to retrofit and operate that school, it just wouldn't make financial sense for the school district going forward. But we did study those other ones, I'm trying to think of, I think those, and I don't know if we studied Barclay either because we don't, Barclay is even smaller than our other small schools, so, and it's got, even got a smaller site, so I'm not really sure that we studied that for in-depth facility assessment.
Swap you some land there. So in terms of the older schools, did, did the school district think of or, and hire a historic preservation consultant? Because you have a lot of schools that are, number one, designated or they're eligible because of their age.
I think they'd be mostly eligible.
Yeah.
So, again, I think, I think the district would be interested in doing that, we'd have to do a cost benefit ratio on that because again, we have limited funds and we want to make sure that we can go as far as possible. Take for example Jennings Lodge Elementary School, it's a great old, it's a great, built by the WPA. It's a great school. It's very small. And it was added on, in addition, was added on to the back of it that makes no sense. But it, it works for about 275, 300 kids. And again, it's a sister school to Candy Lane School, which is grades four and five, three, four and five, and Jennings is K2. And the reason it's done that way is because both schools are too small. So we had to split those campuses in part, in half. We saved a little bit of money, but we just can't physically get all the kids in those schools. And it houses a really vibrant bilingual program that does it like a Spanish immersion program. And we actually transport quite a few students into there to keep those, those schools alive.
So my next question is, is that, again, as I've discussed with you in the past, it seems the whole program that the school district is promoting is predicated on busing. And so I'd be interested in seeing what those costs are and then what we could do to get children back. And so children are walking to school. And it seems to me, why are we not even considering, for instance, tearing down Eastham, rebuilding something that's more than one story, doing, doing something with density? I mean, in New York, they don't have one-story schools. And in other places, they don't have one-story schools. And there's ways you can do that. To me, again, that's thinking outside the box with the land that you already have.
Sure.
So there's that. And I know, I mean, I'm very familiar because I was on the Facilities Committee back in the 90s. So how is the city of Oregon City involved in this facilities?
We had a representative on the Long Range Facilities Advisory Committee who was a city staffer who provided input to the, and was our connection to the city. But again, we're studying facilities, we're not studying school boundaries or where we're going to build a new school, except for the Ogden Middle School is the only site that we've looked at and, and you're really restricted if you wanted to build a new middle school in the Holcomb neighborhood or the Ogden, general Ogden area because of slope and grade issues as well as being close to city services. So we have not, we don't really have, at this point, the need to build a new elementary school. We have some capacity issues at Gaffney Lane and John McLaughlin, but we think we can handle those in the short term. But as we get closer, and I'm, I assume, I know that once we get, if we were to, well, if we get closer to our bond election, I'm sure that we'll reach out to the city and start some more planning. I have met with the city staff about the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan and how is our elementary school, you know, we do have an elementary school site there, so we're positioned pretty well. But the Park Place Neighborhood Concept Plan, that's concerned us for a long time, but we knew that we'd get several years of, of notice about that and come up with some solutions.
Well, I know that statewide planning goals require that special districts coordinate all of their planning with their local jurisdiction, be it a county or a city. So that's why I'm saying, somebody needs to be involved in that on a regular basis. I know I attended a ton of meetings and provided input regarding conference of plan, land use issues.
Denise, Denise, your microphone.
So the other thing is that, again, looking at how we can repurpose existing schools, whether it means we have to tear them down, obviously not Barclay, but the others, and repurposing that land, it could, I think it can be done.
Well, it's only, you're only talking about one school site.
Well...
Which is essentially Eastham.
Well, Eastham and, you know.
King.
King.
King is definitely a site that we did not, I mean, we closed it because we couldn't afford to operate it. We are not ever going to sell King. We have it at, in, we envision that being a new elementary school site someday.
I think, you know, I think just from people I talk to, the community would be interested in seeing how the school district is reinvesting in the facilities they already have rather than building new all the time. Because we, you got the land, I mean, you're not, you're not going to, not going to recreate that land, you have it. But how could, how could a smaller site be repurposed to provide what you need and still make it work? Because again, you already own it, you don't have to go out and buy any new land. So there's just, just a whole lot of things that, you know, I've thought of over the years about, why are we not thinking about this? Why are we not thinking about this? Why are we not looking at how we can repurpose as we already own it?
Well, our purpose is to educate students and, and is to provide the programs to support them. And currently at King Campus, for example, we have an early childhood program administered by the Clackamas Academy, the Clackamas Education Service District, which serves special need students who are not, who are pre-K. And they fill up half of the building. The other half of the building is used for high school students, we have both spectrums there now, high school students who need a smaller high school setting so they can be successful and get a, and get a regular high school diploma. We have that, we are using, repurposed that school since it was taken offline as an elementary school, I think very well. We get least revenue from Clackamas CSD for the early childhood program. Most of those are our kids though, and we're going to see them in kindergarten, and so we want them to be in our district. The other, are kids at the other end of the program level who we want to be successful in life, we want to get them a diploma because we know how important that is to their success going forward. So we repurpose that. Go to Eastham Community Center, that place is used more than probably any other building we have with community programs. I can't tell you the number of school districts who have closed down their community programs because they just haven't penciled out or they're just, some other part of the city has taken them over or so forth. Oregon City has a rich history of doing a community schools program where we teach adults, provide driver's ed, we do a plethora of programs there as well as serving special need students again. So all of our schools are being used, are, have been repurposed, there's not a one of them that sits empty today. Could we look at doing some out of the box things with them? I think we probably could. We envision doing that at King. We would never do that at Barclay because Barclay has a rich historic nature that we would want to preserve if we could afford and could do anything there. Park Place, again, we would rather put our money in repurposing Ogden Middle School into an elementary school than repurpose Park Place School. But it fits really well with that charter school for the time being and they pay us least money to do so. So, but I, I totally, you know, we're definitely open to thinking outside the box within, within limits because we still have to look at the operational cost of what we end up with. And if the operational cost is too high, we have to look at a 20-year operating plan and it could be that we could do something great out of the box, but we couldn't afford to operate it. And we don't want to do that. We want to renovate and build facilities that we can use right away and that we can use for many, many decades in the future.
I think sometimes it's okay to say, I really want to try to get to the granite countertops and I'm going to look at it from that standpoint, even though maybe over here, you know, you can really only afford Formica. But it still gives, it gives the opportunity to look at something that you haven't looked at it in a way before. I mean, I would, I dearly love Eastham for the fact that it is a community school.
Yeah.
But I would give it up in a minute if it was my choice that we could have an elementary school back in our neighborhood.
Again...
Or at least within three miles of our neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay, I mean, you've already explained, I'm just saying, there's, we can talk offline some more about it. So anyway, we appreciate it and thank you for coming and I hope you come back and update us again. I know you have meetings too that you have to be at your school board.
I think our next goal is to have the superintendent and I visit the, visit the city commission and give them an update as well. And then we'll keep you on the loop as we go forward.
Yeah, we'd like to be. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, Laura, you have a few communications for us before we adjourn in about 10 minutes?
Sure, thank you very much. I will...
I've already been told we need to be out of here.
Timely since we're over 10 o'clock and I know that at our work session, we talked about talking when we're over 10 o'clock. So I just want to give a couple of updates. First one, sanitary sewer moratorium, we started with seven and now we're down to one. And so we've made a lot of progress throughout the time. We started closing them in 2015, so throughout the years...
Which one's left?
What's that?
Which one's left?
Hazelwood area is still in effect. We are in the design phase for the fixes for Hazelwood. So Hazelwood, think Warner Parrot, kind of around there. And we anticipate the fixes to be completed next spring and we'll lift the moratorium at that time. It's about October of 2018. Also, I was asked to give an update on some other projects that have, going through the construction phase that went before Planning Commission. So if you've had time to swing by the hospital, you'll notice a lot of change there across Division Street and you'll see the structure going up as well as the parking lot go in place, but the steel beams of the construct, of the medical office facility are going in place at the moment. Also, the Clackamas Community College has been doing a lot of work. We saw the path get developed between, between the high school and the college after the high school had built, after the school district had built the transportation facility. We also saw the ITC or the Industrial Technology Center start to be constructed, so they've started to go vertical on that. The Cove, you can see that quite well from this freeway, can you hear me better now?
Oh, we're fine.
Am I projecting?
You're fine.
I just can't hear where that going up.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
The Cove, Main Street is now open and...
It's a roundabout.
There's a roundabout there where there was not before, yeah. And so there's, if you recall, there's 11 or 12 buildings plus a couple smaller buildings and garages and a few of those are already going vertical. So you see a bit of a phased construction down there as well. What else? We have our equitable housing project. So one of the city commission's goals was to look at housing opportunities. And last year, the city received a $100,000 grant to look at equitable housing, which means housing opportunities at all levels. And so Pete is the project manager on our equitable housing project. Our first project advisory team meeting is tomorrow from 6:00 to 7:30 at the library, so we invite you to attend that as well. And so with that project, we'll be working through advisory committees to come up with recommendations. And from that, you'll see a legislative file, which will essentially rewrite the development code simply for format and then other stuff as we go through the, as a community to understand what type of development we would like to accommodate for housing. We'll have more detailed discussions about that. Also, the public facilities building was approved on the ballot in September. And so the police department is going to work with the community to come up with designs and figure out what we want there. So it'll be a long time before you guys will see anything there. I'm here to answer any questions. Also, our schedule is pretty busy. Next meeting on October, or November 13th is going to be very, very busy. We have a lot of stuff coming down the line and we're going to stay busy throughout November and...
So when you say busy, since Mr. Mahoney has expressed his concern about too many items on the agenda, what's, I know, I got the notice in the mail today. So what else is on the agenda besides the McLaughlin-Kanema proposed trail?
McLaughlin-Kanema Trail, Abernathy Place, you have to adopt the findings from tonight. And then there's an annexation subdivision with a zone change as well as a master plan, detailed development plan for a safe place to build a modular on the county property.
I, I don't mean to quibble, but I think that's too much stuff on the agenda. I don't think, I think these guys are going to rebel.
The problem is that we keep running into 120 dates. And so you're seeing a lot of these come back for final findings and things like that and that's where we start to push up to the 120. You saw some of the effects of that last time when we had to write the findings effect[1704.78] afterwards and have Vice Chair SB review them without coming back to you, because we were pushed up against that 120. So that is the problem, is we, we are incredibly busy reviewing a lot of applications, and sometimes these continuances cause for busy meetings.
Can you alert these applicants that there may be a potential problem with that amount of stuff?
We can, I mean, in most cases for applicants.
The trail isn't, isn't a time-limited thing?
No, actually, I have a note on there that we may do a continuance for that, that everything else, it is actually in a time limit thing too, I think.
Which, which one?
Is the annexation of the zone change the same packet?
Mm-hmm. Why? Why are we doing that that way?
That's what they want.
Why are we doing what?
Why are we doing an annexation, development plan, subdivision, yada, 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 all of that? That's a lot of stuff.
Because an applicant can request a consolidated review, and that's why.
I understand that.
We don't have. The other, the other problem is that we don't have a second meeting in December, so, and, you know, we're coming into the holidays, so we'd like to move things through.
We could schedule some extra meetings if we need, if we're coming into the holidays.
We've got to have a room.
Well, that's true.
We may have to if we get too busy.
I'm just saying, it's, we need to look at all the options.
And I'm okay with that if that's what.
I am too.
We just don't have the control with the 120, because the applicants submit when they want, and.
I know people understand about the holidays, but if, if because of the holidays, we have